Thirty-two P M. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Swartz. All council members are present.
All right, thank you. Mr. Scogg, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Certainly.
All right, does any council member wish to move any items to a business item for individual discussion and vote? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. All right, this evening we're going to start with a couple of presentations, starting with the C B Tech fire truck donation. And here this evening is Fire Department Lieutenant Lynn Dodd.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Lynn Dodd, Lieutenant for the City of Moses Lake. And tonight I have with me my co-instructor, Chris Tupin, and one of our second-year students, Miley Dana. Thank you for giving us opportunity again to speak with you tonight on behalf of our fire science program. Over the past three years, we've continued to grow our program and add to it a summer school and have been involved in the lives of more than eighty students now. These students represent thirteen fire districts and city departments. Out of those students, we currently have twenty-four that are still involved in the fire service. Some are living as residents in our local fire departments. Some spent the summer fighting wildland fires for private strike teams. A couple went off to the military and are pursuing paramedicine. Eight are working hard at night on E M T classes, and others are volunteering in their home districts. In addition, we have twenty current students who just started with the cadet programs, serving their home fire departments while still in high school. It is a county that is run almost nearly by all volunteers. Getting students involved in their hometowns early as possible and offering new students into these programs each year ensures continued recruitment opportunities for our fire departments. Over the past couple of years, nearly all of our equipment, tools, and turnouts we use to train and prepare these students have been donated by our local fire departments with an outpouring of support. These donations not only save our program valuable resources, they elevate it. They send a message to our students that the fire service is a family that invests in its own, that experienced firefighters in departments care about preparing the next generation.
Sir, there is a piece of equipment, though, that has helped us make our classroom feel complete. It is something that has become more than just a piece of equipment. It's become a cornerstone of education, inspiration, and community pride. Having our own fire truck at the school. We've been fortunate enough to have the opportunity to have an inter-local agreement with the city, which provided us a reserve engine to be parked at C B Tech for students to train and take care of, but could be called into service if needed by Moses Lake Fire Department. When you walk into our campus and see that the fire engine is parked out back with the students dragging hose, calling for water, and grinning from ear to ear when you see it, it's not just a vehicle. To us, it's a classroom, it's a hands-on learning lab where theory becomes reality. Every hose connection, pump operation, every ladder raise is a lesson that cannot be fully understood from a textbook. Our fire science students don't just learn about firefighting, we learn what it means to be a firefighter. We develop teamwork, discipline, and confidence while working with real tools and real equipment. Over the past two years, that fire apparatus has allowed us to train safely, consistently, and authentically. It bridged the gap between classroom learning and the real-world experience that departments across the country are looking for in us. But beyond the educational value, that truck is also a symbol of partnership between our lands in our city, between our school and our city. It represents our community's investment in the next generation of our first responders. It stands as a visible reminder that our city believes in preparing our youth to serve, protect, and to lead. While the public sees the truck, they see pride. They see hope. They see that as students aren't just learning about fire science. We're becoming a part of something bigger than just ourselves. So on behalf of our staff, our students, and our future firefighters, I want to thank the council for your continued support given over the past several years. And we want to encourage your support to keep this fire truck operational and visible because it still has many good years left to give. Your approval ensures that the next generation of firefighters will be better prepared, better trained, and ready to serve with excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, this time we'll have a presentation from the Grant County Health District. And here this evening to present is the Administrator, Teresa Adkinson. Good evening, Teresa.
Good evening. And there's also some handouts in your packet as well, so this is kind of a higher-level overview. So thank you for the opportunity to come present before City Council. Really, I do this across all of Grant County and try to go visit with our cities and talk about the work that our staff are doing, kind of the structure of the health district, especially when we have new council members that may not fully understand how public health is operated in their community. Next slide, please. So I always like to give a brief overview of how our health district is funded. Since we are not a county department, we have to pull our funding sources from state, federal, local, fees for services, permits, grants. It's really up to us as an organization to ensure that we have appropriate funding. We do work closely with our cities and our county commissioners to ensure that we have public health services available in their community. But it's a mixture of different funding sources. So this is kind of a little bit of a high level, but I am going to go in a little bit deeper just because the city council has been inquiring about how we're funded. So I'm hoping that it'll provide more clarity for you. This is the overall funding allocations. It's really interesting, since I've been the administrator at the health district. The federal and state used to be flip-flopped. We used to be primarily funded by the federal government with a variety of grants and a lot of instability, one-time funding, two or three years of funding. But over the last ten to fifteen years, we've seen our state really invest in local public health, but also the state system, the tribal system, and as well as the state border health. In the post-COVID era, we saw a significant investment from our state. I personally have testified up in Olympia, talking about how I come speak to my cities and county commissioners about funding us, but the importance of the state funding us as well. You don't want to go into a large outbreak and only have ten to fifteen staff to be able to respond. We're oftentimes not seen as first responders, but as I speak, we are dealing with a large outbreak of avian influenza here in Moses Lake. What does that mean? It's not impacting people, but it's impacting animals. But it's our responsibility to be monitoring all the people that are taking care of the birds and cleaning up the facility. So we can go from day-to-day operations in any one of these buckets to needing to respond immediately. We are twenty-four hours a day. We have a duty phone and an ability to call in staff seven days a week. You do see on there that we do ask for contributions from our community. I'll go into that a little bit deeper, but that's the six percent. That includes the county and the city's contributions. We do have some miscellaneous funds that, just again, small grants and that. Let's go to the next slide. This gets in a little bit deeper. So here's how our local funding is broken down. Is we do have a tipping fee that helps with our solid waste program. We have a match requirement for that grant, so that tipping fee we arranged with the county a few years back meets that match for that program. We can't collect taxes, we can't go on a ballot, but we can request funding from our local governments. We do get a tuberculosis fund from the county. The county has the responsibility to ensure that tuberculosis is controlled. So they basically contract with public health to ensure that those services are met. Whatever we go up and beyond from that, we have an agreement with them to be able to bill them if we don't have other funding sources that we're able to utilize. The county shows on there is thirty-seven percent. That's their financial or actual monies coming into the health district, but they provide us our facilities and do not charge us rent or any of the maintenance on the building. It is their building, so that's a pretty significant investment in addition to their contribution to us. Next slide. So as far as our city contributions go, as you can see, the amounts vary city by city. We request three dollars per resident. Some cities do less than that, and then we have one city that actually goes above that. But you can see even our smallest cities will contribute to the health district. We do have three cities that currently are not funding us. With one of them, it's already given me a verbal agreement that they're happy to come back on board. I think it's these engagements like this where we get to meet face-to-face and really get that face of public health before elected officials has really paid off and just spending time out in the communities and sharing. A lot of times the saying goes, you don't know what public health is doing because we're always there before something opens. And a lot of times we're not there until something bad happens, and we're oftentimes behind the scenes. Next slide. So our federal funding, again, it is several grants. Some are multi-year, some are ongoing. Our COVID funds are sunsetting at the end of this year. We do have continued responsibilities in long-term care, healthcare settings, to ensure that those vulnerable residents are taken care of and have the medications and support that they need. But those funds are sunsetting, and so the work doesn't go away. But the work will just transition over into our flexible funds. Medicaid match program. This is for the work that we are already doing at the health district that qualifies for Medicaid, and we're able to get some matching dollars. So that's another flexible pot that's currently in jeopardy. Okay, next slide. And then our state funding, you see the big bucket, that's that state investment I was talking about earlier. It's seventy percent funds. I even have that one broke down for you a little bit more. But we do have some of our harm reduction activities, youth marijuana prevention. We do have a public health assistance fund. That's kind of the original state funding for this one's specific to local public health. And then, just like I said, a variety of small grants that the staff have gone after to support their work. I cannot bill those grants for response functions unless that was a part of that particular grant. So while I might have an F T E that's funded in the program, if I'm pulling them into response functions, then that goes through our flexible dollars or our reserves. Next slide. So foundational public health services, you'll hear me refer to it as F P H S. We do have some flexible allocations, and then we have buckets. But we get to work with our communities, what we're seeing in the data, the Community Health Improvement Plan that we're working on. We can work with that. It's not like a grant where we're being directed in a certain way. We just have to ensure that we're working within these buckets. We have a steering committee. I served on that steering committee for seven years. They're the ones that determine the allocations at the state level. So it's not State Department of Health, it is both local and state public health folks that are making that determination once the state appropriates it. We did take a funding cut this year. It was a tough year for our state. We're in the middle of that biennium right now. I'm hopeful that we don't see an additional cut come January, when it's kind of their shorter session. But we do have some additional cuts that we need to start having conversations about. I just don't know what that impact's going to be on Grant County just yet. Our state has taken a lot of the hits, which means our Our state has taken a lot of the hits, which means our infrastructure and state support is also impacted. We truly are a system, even though we are your local representatives, and we have the local authority. Just today, we had State Department of Health out with us onsite where our avian influenza outbreak is, helping us observe and helping us collect data. Okay, next slide. So that's kind of an overview of how the Health District is funded. You have a detailed budget in your packet. But I did want to bring some data about what we're seeing in your community specifically with some of our response functions. So of all of our sexually transmitted infections, about 43% of them are Moses Lake. Not surprising, Moses Lake is our larger community, largest community. But we also investigate environmental disease as well. That can be salmonella, things that acquired through animals, like a bat exposure. And roughly 50% of those investigations are occurring in Moses Lake. And this is just the first half of the year, so I tried to bring you the most current data that we have, rather than giving you last year's numbers. Okay, next slide. So a breakdown of that. We did have a pretty long and drawn-out pertussis outbreak that did occur. Most of those cases were here in Moses Lake, but it did spread to neighboring communities as well. Chronic hepatitis C is a lot of care coordination, but also ensuring that the disease doesn't spread to the larger community. When you think of public health, think of us. Our patient is everybody. We might work with individuals, but that's to ensure that it's not getting spread to the larger community. Chlamydia, gonorrhea, and herpes, they just repeatedly are some of our top STIs. And the staff are starting to really work out. We got to get work with our healthcare partners on early testing and not when they show up with symptoms. Obviously, at that point, they're spreading the disease more. So we have two MAs and a nurse now that are really dedicated to working on some plans to try to do more prevention work, but a majority of their time is spent on investigations, getting partners treated, as well as the individuals themselves. Next slide. So environmental public health, this is probably the arm that you guys see the most. Your food inspectors, your onsite, your septic inspectors, they are busy in the community. We have been running slightly understaffed. It's a very niche position. They have to have certain science credits in their background and education. And we've had some retirements recently, in addition to staff moving on to other opportunities. And they still have to get the work done. So all the way from leadership down, we are working the field alongside our staff. We do have the Gorge Amphitheater and some agreements in place with that. But in addition to every festival fair, you name it, we are there inspecting those facilities before the events kick off. Next slide. And then just a brief oversight, more specifically to our onsite program. That's your septic systems and the number of applications we've had the first half of the year and some of the work we've done. We are dealing with a lot of septic failures. They're just, the systems are not designed to last forever, and we're just kind of getting to that age in our communities where 20, 30-year-old homes are now starting to deal with failing systems. We still do have septic systems within city limits, and it's been great working directly with your staff and working hard to secure funding to be able to get folks off of those septic systems and hooked up to your city system. But those take time and resources. Septic systems are very expensive to repair, but they're also expensive to hook up to city resources. But the staff have the heart, and they will try to find grants and ways to help those families get the resources they need so that we can protect the larger community. Next slide. Blue-green algae. So Moses Lake is one of our hotspots. And what's our role in this is to make sure people aren't getting sick from playing in our waterways. But we work with volunteers to help us sample water and observe water during the hot months of the year. We're part of coalitions that are working to address it. The lake is in much better shape than it has been in the past, but it's also just informing people. We post warning signs in the community to let folks know when we have observed it. Testing has gone down because the resources aren't available at the state that they once were. Next slide. So zoonotics, that's diseases with animals, and other environmental health illnesses. These are our top three. Not entirely surprising to see. Again, working with individuals to ensure that they get the treatment that they need so that they're not passing the disease on to other folks. Next slide. So our health that can use in families. These are the staff that work in a lot of our coalitions, our youth coalitions, prevention activities. We have the opioid task force, the homeless task force, a number of projects we'll get invited to. Staff will attend health fairs. We have a car seat program. They'll go out and check car seats. So these two are very visible staff in the community, and so a lot of work around prevention. We work with every law enforcement agency in Grant County with our Target Zero Traffic Safety Task Force and the projects and programs that they have underway with Safe Routes to School. Next slide. Some of their events that they've done so far this year in your community, we're all familiar with Spring Fest, and we set up a breastfeeding station there so moms have a place to go change their babies and feed them and the other popular places at the fair. And just providing those resources, fresh water, changing table. We've been doing that for a number of years now, and it's one of our more popular, a lot of folks like to sign up for the fair and for Spring Fest. Next slide. So our maternal and child health program specifically, I brought that one because I have had inquiries within your city regarding this. Obviously, Moses Lake has the largest birthing hospital, so we work very closely with Samaritan. The staff are really excited to be bringing a Dula certification program that came with a grant that they were able to secure to bring more Dulas to our birthing hospitals in Grant County. Next slide. So we are currently nearing the finish line with our Community Health Improvement Plan. So you start with a community health assessment, sharing with the community what the data has to share, and then you put together a plan. This is not a Health District plan. The Health District will have roles in it, but we've been working across communities and different subject matter excerpts to put this plan together. The data tells you one thing, but what the community priorities are can be, can shift it. And we want to meet the communities where they are, where they see the needs are. And these are the three areas that came up to the top. Each community does have different priorities, so this is really challenging as a county-wide program to be able to kind of pick those milestones. But with this plan, then we will put metrics in place to be able to track. It's a five-year plan. And due to funding restrictions that we have dealt with, Grant County Health District has not had a Community Health Improvement Plan, I believe, for more than 20 years. So we're really excited to see this. We get a lot of data requests. Our transportation partners to our food banks, and Renew is one of our primary partners with our behavioral health work, really just kind of, I see a lot of opportunities to collaborate and not work in silos. When I see the same program happening in different locations, this is where a plan like this really comes to life, because then we're pooling our resources and we're working smarter and harder together. Next slide. I asked our comms team to put some numbers together because we do utilize some of our funding for paid advertisements. That way, we're able to not only contribute to the local businesses that do provide us with free media, but also ensuring that our messages are not just in social media, but they're on our radio. We have a whole language access program that really dives in deep to understanding how people want to get messages around their health. And so we're able to make, it's not a large investment, but we're able to make some investments in our community through paid media. We do, you'll hear the term provider alerts. Those are our healthcare advisories. We're talking directly to the healthcare community. So like this avian influenza situation, we send out a healthcare provider advisory, letting them know what to be asking clients, patients that might come in experiencing flu-like symptoms and asking them, do you work in agriculture? Do you handle animals? And then that direct communication back to us so that they may need a different treatment option, but also other testing options. So we don't do a lot of those. That's not my place to advertise to them. We're very specific that this is a message coming from our health officer to our community partners, and here's what we're needing from healthcare. Media advisory is, that's your typical press release. Sometimes it has some of that information in it, but this is more, here's the swab, here's what we need for testing, here's who you call to get submitted. All right, next slide. Almost done. So there's my contact information. We are located here in Moses Lake and have been for a number of years now. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I can provide a brief update on the avian influenza, but I'm sure I get your questions answered first.
Any questions? I think we're good.
Okay. So regarding the avian influenza situation that we're currently dealing with, so what's public health's role? We're the people, responders, not the animals. So Washington State Department Agriculture, they are lead with the animal side. But humans need to help contain what's happening out there. And they, while it's lower probability, but people that directly handle animals are at a higher risk for catching avian influenza. So we are currently monitoring just over 100 individuals daily, finding out how they're feeling. We have done some tests, and I'm happy to report, just before I got here, that so far all the test results have been negative. But we start them on antivirals, immediately get them tested. We're very fortunate, we still have a courier service, so we're able to get the samples over to the lab relatively quickly. But we'll be monitoring them for 10 days after their last time onsite. The Benton and Franklin County outbreak was around 10% did convert. But so far, we were onsite today and just felt really good about their use of PPE. They're head-to-toe in PPE as they're handling the birds and trying to expedite as quickly as it can. So we do anticipate having additional people to monitor because they're bringing in additional staff to help with cleanup. Grant County Health District is the only responding agency at this time. We have gone into incident command, and about 50% of our staff have a role either full-time to part-time in doing the monitoring, testing, and evaluating PPE use onsite. But see if you have any questions for me about avian influenza. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we have citizens communication. The council values free expression of all points of view is an important democratic process. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes. When you are called to speak, please begin by stating your name and city of residence for the record. And we have just one this evening, Ms. Sarah Dela Cruz.
Hi. I'm not here to complain tonight. I'm actually here because my husband and I started a community project last year inspired by Mike Bennett in Portland. He's a cartoonist. And could I pass these around and show you what they are? So we started last year. It's called the Moses Lake Art Patch. We, last year, we called it the pumpkin patch, but everybody thought we were giving pumpkins away. So we named it the Art Patch. We started a Facebook group this year, or page this year, and it's just a way for the community to kind of express themselves. So we have these little pumpkins that you can get either at Moses Lake Taproom or Settler's Natural Market, or you can come by the Art Patch, which is at our house right by Mount Lake. And you can just pick up a pumpkin, you decorate him. Some of them are really great. Some of them are two-year-old kids. Like, some people put their dates on it. We like the ones that are from kids. We do spray them when we put them on our fence so that they're weather-protected. Last year, we had probably around 50. This year, we can't keep up. He, my husband picks them up from the locations there every day in the thing. We probably have over 200 of them this year on our fence. But we wanted to come just to tell you a little bit about something that we're doing in the community to kind of spread extra cheer and holiday community art. You know, we're thinking after this, maybe after it stops snowing, we were thinking of, or I was thinking, he just agrees with me. We're going to do a rock snake. We're trying to, I think I'm going to call her Mossy. She's going to be Mossy the Snake, where you can bring your rock and do its stuff. But we just like to, in our community or in our neighborhood, kind of brighten it up and bring the community and bring art about. So I did bring you all a pumpkin for yourself to decorate. You don't have to. Tamara, would you collect them if they do it for me? Okay. When you do it, just give them to Tamara. It could be your kids doing it or whatever. And you can follow us on Facebook and Instagram. We do post, and we just thought it's a nice, fun way for the community to kind of get involved. So I'm not here to beat anyone up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is cool. Yeah, expect all of these to be turned in by, before the 31st. Awesome. Well, thank you so much for doing this. Okay, so moving right along this evening, we are already at the consent agenda. All items listed are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, which I would accept now.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that one.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the first item of old business this evening is our budget workshop number two. And here to present this evening is our finance director, Ms. Madeline Prentice.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am going to turn it directly over to Vivian Ramsey to present the community development budget.
Good evening. The Community Development Department includes the Building and Planning Divisions. More recently, the positions of the Civic Development Review and Homeless Programs were added to the department. The Planning Division stewards the city's long-range planning goals and objectives, which includes a comprehensive land use plan and the shoreline management plan. We also process land use permits such as subdivisions, annexations, and conditional use permits. In 2025, over land use, over 80 land use permits were received and are in various stages of process and review and complete. In 2025, we continued monitoring and refining the Moses Lake Unified Development Code so that it reflects the desires of the community. We implemented the post-sleep center closure plan through code revisions, education, and the OnePlus framework level of service. Planning staff continues to build relationships with other agencies, including the school district and the Grant County Planning Department. The Building Division includes code enforcement and building permits and inspections. Code enforcement has taken the lead on coordinating neighborhood cleanup days with utility billing and lake site disposal, resulting in the removal of tons of junk and closing or resolving open cases. The officers were heavily involved in the disbandment of many illegal encampments throughout the city and with the development of standard operating procedures in response to those camps. To date, in 2025, code enforcement has opened 812 cases, resolved 629, yielding resolved 629, yielding a 77.5% compliance rate. In regulating all aspects of building construction, including alterations and remodels, the Building Division has issued 590 permits and 239 certificates of occupancy so far this year. And the two inspectors have completed over 3,500 inspections. The new building official has made great progress on closing the gaps between fire, civil plan, and building plan reviews resulting in improved efficiency and customer service. The revenue expected in 2026 is lower than in recent years due to the downturn in development activity within the city. In 2026, expenses are a 13.8 decrease over the 2025 budget. The highlights and changes we expect in 2026. We are most excited about the creation of the One Stop Permit Center to be established in community development. Applicants will be able to apply for and pay fees for building, fire, engineering, and planning permits at one counter. In 2026, we expect to complete a cost recovery fee study for all development permits. As you know, we started the 2027 comprehensive plan update process, which will give us opportunity to reach out to the community and determine what Moses Lakers really want. In 2026, community development activities will directly align with council's priorities and budget objectives, number one, achieving financial sustainability, and number three, improve the city's image and reputation through our long-range planning efforts and code enforcement activities. And for the, is the housing next? So we'll have the expert here, Liz Marillo, Marie, Marillo, do the homeless program.
Good evening, Council. Thank you all for being here, hope everyone's doing well. I just wanted to provide a high-level overview of the homeless services program that the city administers. So the homeless program provides the operations of the city's homeless programs as well as coordination and response to, the city's response to homeless issues based on council's priorities. One of those things that have been implemented has been the post-sleep center plan implementation with the closure of the sleep center as of June 30th this year. Out of that additionally, we created the OnePlus framework that has now implemented the MOTS program that we are in the process of hiring a contract through. Additionally, our budget has decreased in the 2026 fiscal year and that is due to the grant funding that was not pursued as we are no longer in the business of providing shelter operations, but a more supportive measure to our community and the organizations that do the work in our community. You'll see here that the revenue proposed in 2026 is about about $160,000. And proposed expenses are budgeted at $71,000, which I do want to note that is a bit of a change. Originally for the MOTS program, which is that Mobile Outreach and Transportation Service Program, we had identified $55,000, but due to the scope of that work, we reevaluated and increased that to $70,000 to provide more leverage to hire someone for that. Additionally, some changes in 2026 is that we will begin expensing a 10% admin charge to the revenues that we receive. And that includes the recording fee dollars and the affordable and housing supplemental dollars. So that will supplement the general fund. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Just for reference, everybody sees that on page 94 of your packet is where that is, yes. Where are we in the process with the MOTS provider? Sorry.
Yeah, so we recently conducted our second interview for the two providers that move forward through the interview process. And we will be presenting to council, hopefully at the end of October, at the council meeting on next steps.
Great. Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, so wait and put the slides up so that the public can see those. Because I know that they don't have the budget binder. Okay. But they could at least see these slides. Thank you.
I have a question, Vivian. I know there was some discussion at one point regarding any of the software used in the department. Yeah, what is the, what is your staff's and your general plan with that going forward, at least through 2026? No changes to the software, is that correct?
It has been decided that the city will continue to use CityWorks. And actually, my staff and a lot of other staff, people are in training this week.
How's that going?
They just went today.
Okay. All right.
So I'm sure they're having a good time.
Okay.
Yeah, there's CityWorks, which is the backend. There's also the frontend system that's also needing help. And so the staff are also working hard to get that fixed and improved and more usable for the frontend, for the, for the customer.
So are there any monies allocated for that for '26?
I don't believe so. It's the same monies that were allocated for the licensing of the product. We're just doing a redeployment, which is a refocus on the customer experience and trying to smooth out some of the rough edges that we've discovered along the way. And so that's, we're starting that in earnest on the 20th with a series of trainings for staff to try and refocus our efforts on the customer experience.
Okay. And Vivian, would you say over the past year or so, the portal experience has improved? Or the builders appreciate it more now or?
It needs work. I think it's improving, improving a bit, but we're looking forward to the
Okay.
The key word that Jim just used was redeployment. We're actually treating it like a redeployment. And so building the flow, the workflows and the processes and the underlying templates from the beginning.
Okay. Mr. Fancher.
Well, I think one of the, one of the concerns, I think, and I don't know if it's a, if it's a bandwidth situation or what it is, but one of the largest complaints has been just the ability to get through it in a timely manner, like it times out or gets hung up. I mean, have we looked into any of that? I mean, I know of quite a few people that have been stuck on the portal with the infamous spinning wheel. Like they can't get to the next step. And I would think through community development, a few of the, like Jovita and Sandy have probably taken calls. They frustration calls because they're stuck, like they can't get to the next step. So I think that's one of the concerns on the, on the public side. And I don't know what, what causes that. But that's, that's one of the largest, I mean.
I know the permit techs have had to walk people through how to use a portal. But as far as the techno, technical aspects of it, I
Sure.
There is a lot of complexity that isn't obvious from the front end. You're actually, communication between two, well, three separate systems on the backend that are designed to work together, but there are small hiccups. I know that the GIS program manager that we have has taken several calls from people, has generally worked through the problems. Going to have to get that problem fixed too. Has generally worked through the problems with the members of the public. And so when we know about those things, we can address them. We, we sometimes don't hear about them and you do, which can we turn that down a little bit? Because I think we're overdriven is what's going on. And so knowing about the problems helps us solve the problems. And so, you know.
Where, where do they, I mean, just, where do they, if they're having the problem, like just with the permit tech? I mean, or
Generally, do you start with the, the permit tech? And then they will escalate it. If, if they can't solve the problem, then they'll escalate it to GIS staff for resolution. So, yeah.
Mr. Lombardi.
So generally that's referred to as buffering, right? And so my question to you is, did, did you folks set up a beta test first?
We did set up a beta test. We did try to test the system in, you know, internally and had external people who were frequent customers come in and, and do testing with us as well. So yeah, we absolutely did try to do everything that we could. Again, we are talking about three separate systems that are kind of tied together into one thing. And so there are instances where one system will, you know, have an update where the other ones have to accommodate or there has to be a small change. Or, you know, there can be a myriad of reasons why those types
Right, but what we're hearing, I'm not, it's not just Mark, is this is a consistent issue? And so in, in your beta testing, it would have came up. So my question is, how robust was the beta testing?
It was as robust as we could make it. I mean, we, again, we did a ton of internal testing. And then when we felt like we were ready to go, we asked for volunteers from the, the people that Community Development and Public Works and Fire worked with on a regular basis to come in and try to fill things out and make sure that everything was working the way that we anticipated it.
Who was, who was the architect of this?
The architect would have been, well, the technology services department was in charge of the project, if that's what you're asking.
Well, as you know, the term architect means they're, they're designing the layers all the way back to the database. So my question is, who actually was the consultant, that architect?
Well, we did that, we did that with the combination with the vendor for the portal. Centricity is the name of the vendor for that particular piece of software. But staff was the ones that were primarily doing the, the workflow, which is essentially, you know, how, what, what questions are asked and how the information is collected? And then moving that into the backend system, which has a workflow for staff to, to do. Those are all designed
What is the ultimate solution here then?
Well, the ultimate solution is that we're not hearing about the delays that we're now hearing about in council. And so we, if we were, we'd be trying to figure out, like, at what point in the process they're coming from? You know, is it, you know, when
Oh, wait a minute, aren't you, don't you have analytics on there that are telling you what section each one bogs down? Because, I mean, when I design stuff, I had that on every field screen.
We, we have analytics that tell us a lot of different things about it, like, you know, how many permits are being filled out and which ones are in, you know, the, the partial status and, you know, information about, you know, when things got bailed on and, you know, there's a lot of analytics we do pull out of it. But if you're, if there is a buffering, you know, at a specific point, that's information that we're not getting from our analytics. So
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Your Honor, if I could, we're, we're actually working on improving the overall permitting process from start to finish and all the different aspects of it. If, if you're interested, we could come and, like in a study for, study session format, talk about all the things that are happening, including changes in roles and what we're doing with the softwares and what we're doing with the processes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, in light of the building volume being down a little bit this year and in light of some other issues we've been dealing with, I think this is kind of taking a backseat to some other things, but probably some PTSD on the part of the council as well. So, yeah, maybe a fresh look at this would be appropriate for some time in the near future.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of things in the works. And I think it'd be good for us to give you an update on the whole picture.
Okay. Quick question on the services. I noticed that was the largest increase on the budget, but I'm assuming that's for some particular things we may be doing with the comp plan? Is that the idea?
Is it the community development budget?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that is the, the professional services for the contract for the comp plan.
Okay. And then one other question, can you explain how we were able to reduce supplies by 80%? We could do that in every department.
I, I think we got a lot of what we needed this year.
Okay. I mean, generally that account stays for budgeting purposes pretty steady, but I get it if you bought too many Post-it notes.
And we also really took a deep dive into, you know, looking at, were we just carrying the same amount forward from prior years? And really looking at what is the true need for those supply line items, so.
That's fair. All right. Next.
Parks in Iraq, I'm going to turn it over to Doug Coots.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm going to talk about Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services first. We provide and maintain the cultural, recreational, and leisure services as well as the parks facilities for the community. And we aspire to be our community's leaders in connecting people to people, parks, trails, and programs, while creating a legacy for the future generations and honoring the culture, culture and history of Moses Lake. This past year, our accomplishments, we had four areas that we kind of hit in the 2025 priorities for the city from council. Manage and encourage city growth. We targeted medians and planter strips and redoing those. We did Broadway Extended here just recently. And the Ops Center landscaping has now all been converted over to Xeriscap as well. So all of the grass has gone there and we have converted that to rock. And that's huge kudos to our Public Works Department as well for their cooperation and collaboration on that. So that is an ongoing silo busting project between Parks and Public Works, which is working out great. In crime reduction, we did look at maintaining and increasing our before and after school programs and became drop-in centers at the library for kids after, uh, library, the museum for kids after school. To increase visibility in the community, we did have the Danone Park Futsal Court opening, the iconic fountain rebuild, and we've done community outreach at farmers markets as well as at the county fair this year, numerous occasions. Sustainability, we're looking at a full-on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services infrastructure inventory. So we know exactly what we have, how many pumps, how many light poles, how many fields, everything we need to kind of maintain and replace throughout the years. And we are looking at this year, we already have onsite one main pool heater. Next year we will have, as I'll be talking about in a second, the second main pool heater on for replacement. These are original equipment, so 1990s. So we've gotten good years out of the existing equipment, but now we're not able to get parts as much anymore. So that's 2025.
How do you tag those items?
How do we tag them? We do a full-on tag inventory. We have red tag, blue tag type items for inventory. Anything significant, I believe, is a red tag. And then under five grand or somewhere around there is, is a blue tag. So we will tag them and inventory them. And then as we replace them, we put them back into service.
Okay, are some assets GPS located in some
We're going to be working on that this time, but my first goal is to get a list of We're going to be working on that this time, but my first goal is to get a list of everything so that when when we have it, now we can start to. You know, because specifically what you're going to hear in the next slide is, we're going to be talking about our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. Which part of what that includes is a capital inventory, and I want to do that internally rather than paying somebody else to do it.
Okay.
But yes, absolutely. All right, so coming up in twenty twenty six, our proposed revenue is one point eight million. Proposed expenses are eight point six million. This is actually a decrease in our budget slightly. We're basically maintaining the status quo. It's a zero point one percent decrease in our net over twenty twenty five budget. This budget maintains our current existing staffing levels. There are no additional staff added to this budget. We have capital outlay of thirty five thousand dollars for a second pool heater. That will replace both the main pool heaters for surf and slide. And fifteen thousand dollars for Sister City Project rollover. That's currently budgeted, and this year we'll roll it over to next year, so it has to be included in the budget. The other request we have, I mentioned our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan update, that is required for us to be able to apply for grants. When I talked to consultants, they initially quoted me hundred and twenty to hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do that. And then I found out we were doing our comprehensive plan, and Vivian, Nate, and I got together and we kind of did the. And went, why aren't we working together on this to reduce how much we're spending? So I looked at their consultant, he fit what we needed to do. And I said, why don't we just jump on board? So that reduced that by forty forty to sixty thousand dollars in expense, so. That was a positive there. But then what we did was, we have a two hundred and fifty year celebration coming up next year for our country, so we added back in forty thousand dollars. To do some celebratory events for that two hundred and fifty year United States anniversary. There is also seventy five thousand planned for medium planter strip and ziriscape projects, and that's also included. I believe we. Programmed that for the excess use charges. So that's not in in our budget, but it is in the overall budget for excess use water fees, but that's up to council's discretion. That is Parks Recreation and Cultural Services main budget. If you want, I can go through the rest of them, or I can take questions on that one now.
Mr. Lombardi, I think, has a question.
Yeah, two questions for you. On the prime reduction emphasis programs, what are the age groups that are in there?
Most of those programs are grade school, late grade school, and early middle school. Which is where we lose a lot of those kids to those programs. The 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 high school kids, we don't have a lot of programs for. One of the concerns we had was we we thought last year with the school district losing its funding. We were going to lose our after-school sports program. We were able to work out a a deal with them to continue that program this year. It is a free program for kids to be in after school.
And they. You gave me a grade, but can you give me the age?
Uh, age groups would be, gosh, what would that be? That would be probably about ten, eight to eight eight years old to like thirteen years old.
Okay, so how many eight-year-olds or ten-year-olds are going out committing crimes?
I don't know. But the the twelve to thirteen-year-olds are at the prime age of recruitment.
Yeah, thirteen for sure, yeah. And then I had a question here on on your, if we take the one example over by Harbor Freight, where we took the grass out and. Put rocks in, in in an example like that, are we adding, planning on adding any? Desert-like plants in there at all, or is it strictly going to be?
We are looking at bringing plants in later, yes. That will not be the stretch end of those landscaping projects, so. We will be coming back as parks down the road and and as we get plants. We're looking at a fuller. Broad, more broad plan on this to to even look at possibly involving a greenhouse. Or working with the school district on, hey, can you guys grow us in your programs these plants, and then we'll plant them. So we would be working with the schools on trying to develop that, but those are all very, very early stages of infancy, but yes, we are planning on bringing more. Of the desert-type grass such to plant in those planters.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have more, Doug?
I have more budgets.
I figured you did.
Sorry, I was talking so long, my computer. Just went to sleep, just like most of the audiences going to sleep now as I'm talking. So the next budget I have is the other, and under other operating funds, it's tourism activities, which is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Fund. Tourism, the LTAC process is moving under Parks Recreation and Cultural Services beginning in twenty twenty six. In accordance with R C W sixty seven dot twenty eight dot one eighty, the city imposes a two percent tax on all charges for furnishing lodgings at hotels, motels. And similar establishments. And the city also levies a local option two percent tax in accordance with R C W sixty seven twenty eight one eighty one. Total received by the city is four percent of the lodging charges. So this is a fund that is built by those revenues. In twenty twenty five, the events that were funded were the Grant County Fair, Spring Fest, Moses Lake Rodeo and Demo Derby, Moses Lake Air Show. Moravita Fest, the nineties flannel fest, manta ray swim meets amongst others. And again, I will say funded, but. That is partially funded because a lot of those folks get money elsewhere as well. The projects we completed, the Moses Lake Fountain renovation was partially funded by that as well. And we will be bringing that fountain out of the lake here late here in October, and we'll be using, there's a balance of funds available. We're going to look at any repairs that need to be done and do those this year using those funds. So we are looking to get that ready to go back in the water again come spring. B M X Track over behind Larson Rec Center had some improvements. It's going to be, they're working on the cement block banks for the. Corners, I believe, here in the next two weeks. And they've already done the finishing touches on the registration and and quote-unquote concessions eventually building that they've put in there. It's a a trailer that they've built up a walkway to, and it's now handicap accessible and everything, so. And then we have ice arena bleachers, as well as new scoreboards at the ice arena. So all of those were funded by lodging tax dollars. Did not come out of the general fund. This year. And and on the proof of proposed revenue, if you have questions, because it is a significant increase over last year. I'm going to defer to Madeline as to how that's calculated, because that, I just go, oh, okay, that sounds great. But we are talking about a revenue, proposed revenue of just over a million dollars, one million, one million and forty thousand dollars. Our proposed expenses are one million, four hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and fifty. This is an increase of forty three point three percent over last year's lodging tax budget. I can tell you, there is a significant fund balance there, though, that we should be completely healthy on that fund going forward. Oversight of the entire lodging tax and tourism program is moving under my department. Applications for are planned for this session for lodging tax for recouping operational costs for the city's staff. Support of special events like Spring Fest and the parades and events downtown. Closing streets, police presence, park staff to. You know, help set things up or change, you know, bathroom toilet papers and things like that. As well as for the operation of the two main city-run tourism facilities, Surf and Slide Water Park and Moses Lake Museum and Art Center, so those have been submitted. The applications were due last Monday on on the sixth, and we had presentations on Friday last week. Our. Our allocation meeting is scheduled for Thursday at one thirty P M, so we will meet with the Lodging Tax Committee, and you should have those recommendations from Lodging Tax Committee. To you at your next council meeting. So that's where we stand. Any questions on lodging tax?
Mr. Scarg?
Doug on that LTAC presentation, says applications are planned for recouping operational costs. For the city staff support of special events. Is that if 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 there's an event that uses some city staff, that we will charge them for?
Correct, so this past year, we did a a sample tracking of city hours that were devoted specifically to Spring Fest. And we tracked how many hours went into that, and then also the amount of dollars spent on those hours. And we are putting in an application for forty thousand dollars. The amount that just Spring Fest alone. Our staff costs came to about sixty five thousand dollars.
I guess part of me thinks that if every time dollars change hands, something gets lost in between that exchange. So isn't it the same? I mean, I'm thinking if those are dollars that go from LTAC, whether that goes to Spring Fest and then back to the city. Then they're going to need more money to do what they do, to fund the staffing. It's kind of like you paying extra for water meters at the, to the water department for your grass. It seems like. This money went from here to there and back to here, and every time that money moves, some of it gets lost.
So this is a direct application from the city. Spring Fest, Spring Fest is not involved in this application, so this is a, it basically is a fund. A fund transfer to cover the costs. So there's no funding being lost. We are just saying that the the city is applying. For an allowable expense is to support city staff support of events or city staff support of lodging tax committee. I believe we could even apply for our staff time to administer the lodging tax committee, but we are not applying for that at this time.
Okay, but that will dilute the LTAC funds that are going now to organizations.
It would correct, yeah, correct. It it would, if we had the same amount of dollars last year as we had this year, and we were applying for more dollars, yes, it would dilute. We did have an increase in the amount of tax dollars available to us this year, and it's fairly significant. Like, we went from, I think we had six hundred thousand, six hundred fifty thousand available last year. We have one point one million available this year.
Do you think the people doing events are going to have, will they have a small, they'll have a smaller budget or have to go look for other funding?
Uh, most of them already do look for under other funding. They have to. They cannot support their event from LTAC alone. Will it impact that? I I, it depends on how the allocation goes, but I would say probably yes.
Okay.
If, but they were, I I could tell you the LTAC committee was pleased with the number and the amount of applications we had. We had. We had one point one million to pass out, and I think we were at one point, one point four million in applications.
I would agree that they were pleased with the applications, but they did have questions on that one part here.
Oh, they did, absolutely. And and that is their discretion to recommend and your discretion to approve.
So I was reading here in the LTAC regarding the. The recreation center and the debt service for that. When does that? End?
Defer to Madeline on that. I think that's a ways out.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So the debt service we're paying for with the first two percent?
Yeah, we are paying for the L R C, yes, with the first two percent.
For how long?
I believe that that is completed in twenty thirty one. I do, I do have a page on that that will cover in workshop number four.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, I swear I'm pretty close to being done. I think I'm more than halfway now. So our next one is the public art program. The public art program was created by council in August of twenty twenty two. The purpose is to provide funding for the arts and music to the community. And the city allocates one percent of any capital construction project done by the city over seventy five thousand dollars to fund public art programs. This past year, we performed the cleaning, maintenance, and repainting of the downtown metal art sculptures and relocated them as appropriate. For example, we moved the surf statue over by the Flow Rider at at Surf and Slide, so it made a little more sense to be there than downtown. And we put on the summer concert series of six, six concerts this past summer at Macosh Park. All of those were successful, and we saw building attendance at those, which is very encouraging. This year, we have a proposed revenue of a hundred thousand dollars based on predicted. Projects coming up and where we think that money is going to come. We have proposed expenses of sixty six thousand, six hundred dollars. This is an increase of thirty one point one percent. We are planning with this to, we were, were planning to increase this to the summer concert series to seven concerts, but I believe we reduced that back to six. We're going to lead the utility box wrap art project and continue that process down the road. We have a mural project planned and possibly a mural festival. If we can get it arranged in time, and then we're going to begin planning, adding the art to the vacant downtown platforms where we move the metal statues off. So those are the planned expenses there. I I will also say that I've I've already had conversations with. The city manager, Carl Lindsay, as well as our museum and and cultural arts superintendent, Dolly Boyd, on reducing the amount. Or, sorry, increasing the amount, the 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 floor for where these. Transfers happen from seventy five thousand dollars up to at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What we're finding, what we've kind of decided is that at seventy five thousand dollars, the transfer is seven hundred and fifty dollars, and it's. Probably not even worth our staff time to transfer the money over. Whereas at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're getting fifteen hundred, and it probably covers the staff time easily and gives us a little bit of money in the pot. It just seems like we're, we're having that level be too low, and it's giving, you know, little bits here and there that really aren't amounting to much. And they're costing us more than it's worth. So we're going to be bringing that back to you at some point for discussion.
What's the fund balance?
The proposed ending fund balance is a hundred and thirty two thousand.
That would be.
Oh, sorry.
That would be at the end of twenty twenty.
End of twenty six, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Uh, increasing that to a hundred fifty, is that, because I know, or recall, when we were discussing this, that. Maybe we should put a cap on how much this fund.
We can have all.
There's no cap, right?
There's no cap at this point. And and yes, I would agree that maybe we need to put a cap on the amount that is in that fund. Or look at what what city manager Carl Lindsay had suggested, which I think might be a good idea, is if it's a capital project that's. Putting a pipe underground and and it's over a hundred and fifty thousand. Why would we ever put art on that? It makes no sense. So we need to review that policy and look at what we're doing, and does it really apply? And and making those decisions more thoughtfully and maybe re-redrafting that policy. So this is not, I mean, do I want you to contribute more money to the arts? Absolutely, but I also want it to make sense. It 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 doesn't make sense to me that we're we're spending time and effort of staff to transfer seven hundred and fifty dollars over into. Into one, from one account to another.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lombardi?
More of a statement than a a question, Mayor. We're pretty good about relaying feedback to you folks about when things, when the public's not really thrilled with some of the projects, but I can tell you. Again, I just want to reiterate that the citizenry have been very, very pleased with the sculptures, the way they were redone. And so you don't always hear when things are done to their satisfaction, so I just, so. If we are putting more statues and so forth in the future at certain roundabouts or landmarks, I think that that would be somewhat well-received.
Thank you. I I should, I would be remiss if at this point I didn't thank Genie, because they helped us get all of that done. They helped us with. Coating of them and sandblasting. They were completely invaluable, amazing.
Councilmember Martinez?
Sorry, I forgot I had one more question, Doug. When is the scary man going to leave here? Because remember, the one right outside of the police department, that scares me.
I, I'm sorry.
It's that time of year again.
I I I I think you asked me that time, and I I don't have a date for him to leave. He's in good shape. He's not going anywhere for a while.
Okay, all right. I'll just plan to park somewhere else.
You know what? I I can arrange for Chief Sands to walk you to your car every night after council meetings.
I like that one. Thank you.
He nodded, so you're good.
Yeah, Doug Doug mentioned needing to look at the art policy and and how it's administered and the thresholds and things like that, so we need to do that. We also want to make a projection based on the capital projects we have planned. How much art money we, you know, one percent revenue that we'll be getting. And based on that, what kind of projects can we build, be building in the next few years? Kind of like a six-year C I P for art.
Yeah, I was just going to say, because it, you know, it says in here some comment about a larger. Piece of art like at the roundabout, so some of the the limits and whatnot, the end, may be dependent on what our goals are, right? If it's to more or less add some art to every project, that's one thing, and would probably be a lower threshold, but if we're going after something. bigger, we would need to plan probably for a multi-year campaign to do that, right? Okay. What's next?
Uh, my, my last little one uh, is paths and trails and um, this tracks funds donated for specific paths and trails projects. We have no current projects planned for twenty five or twenty six. So our proposed revenue is zero, but our proposed expense is also zero. Um, this is uh, no increase or decrease over last year's budget because in twenty twenty five, it was also zero and zero. Um, what I wanted to note on this is in talks with Madeline, um, this budget has been kind of in flux between Brian, Brian's department and myself, my own department, and we are going to move paths and trails under uh, the grants and donations um, budget and get rid of this budget, and we're going to keep it under grants and donations where the donations for paths and trails should live, and it will fall under my supervision. So I will be bringing that back to you in the future under grants and donations. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them on that.
Council member Myers?
I don't have my binder in front of me. I left it at home, but uh, the trail that was planned from up on the base down to Home Depot, it, does that not fall under this year? Is that twenty twenty seven?
I think it's true, right?
Uh, that, the uh, are you talking about the shared use path?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that actually was moved over to the street fund because it, it's part of the street um, project. So, yeah, that was moved. It was moved out of paths and trails.
Yeah.
Lee may be able to kind of chime in on this as well, but we had a conversation about this is where it was budgeted in twenty five, but they determined that it really didn't belong here because it wasn't necessarily a true path or trail, I guess.
While it is a shared use path, is abutting the state highway. So the coordination that's going to be required with WashDOT and possibly access breaks and things, we felt that was better suited to sit under streets. Um, and the funding is also coming from Washington State Department of Transportation. Um, it's the Sandy Williams grant, but it'll be passed through the state, so. We did give that over.
Okay. Kind of like a complete streets council. Complete highways, I guess. Yeah, they, they don't have a unicycle lane yet, but we'll get there. Okay, um, does the trails planning committee still exist and does it meet regularly?
The trails planning team has uh, moved out of city um, jurisdiction on our supervision. They never really were under our
Yeah, I wondered about that.
Um, so we had conversations with them. They have decided to, I think they're holding their meetings now on Tuesday nights, right when we're meeting here. So I have not been able to attend their meetings. Um, but I believe they are still meeting and still working towards.
So what do you consider our relationship with them today?
I think our relationship is fine. I'm just unable to liaise with them because I'm here.
I meant in a formal regard, are they an advisory board then more or less at this point?
They are their own, their own entity. They are not an advisory board to us. Um, they never had any real advisory, officially recognized advisory stand, standing as far as I'm aware of, and I looked back in history, but they did have great influence as a um, committee of folks interested in trails and provided us great influence and, and guidance and support. So um, I, I valued the relationship there highly. I just, we didn't have a place to fit them, uh, that they were willing to fit into. So they are continuing their work and we are continuing to outreach to them and communicate with them as best we can.
Okay.
Mayor and council, I'll try to be as brief as possible. You actually know the information that you want to know, and so I want to leave plenty of time for questions. And I hope to answer the questions so as not to leave the mayor with the look on his face he had when he found out that the trails were part of WashDOT. So um, I will do my best. As far as the description uh, for the department, of course, the police department, as we all know, spreads cheer, joy and fun as primary uh, police response for critical incidents, uh, crimes and uh, other community activities. So instead of putting that down uh, here in the description, I did give you a snapshot of where the department is at the current time, uh, as far as personnel and where they are deployed. Um, at the time of this presentation, you have forty six commissioned officers and seven civilian staff. That includes the two that are currently in the academy and the two that are uh, on field training. Um, if you'll notice, we skipped to the end, you'll notice uh, you have three open positions. You might be going, why do we have three open positions? We gave you three positions for twenty twenty six. What have you been doing, Sands, sitting on your hands? In fact, two of those positions are those uh, two of the positions that you gave us for twenty twenty six, and that speaks to how difficult it is to um, get people hired on the same cycle as the Criminal Justice Training Commission Academy. So we are still working towards that, and we do have people uh, in the processes uh, to get hired. And then we did have one officer that left for another agency, and so there's their position. So um, as far as accomplishments towards the twenty twenty five council goals, uh, if you look, uh, I'm so excited about it that I put it first and last. The Community Police Academy, uh, which will start on the twenty seventh. You have one more week to, to uh, sign up for that. Um, it's short this year. We did a two-week piece, including a uh, demo day in the middle on Saturday, the first for a half day, uh, which would be a good time. So if you have any inkling, please let us know, and we can even, uh, if you just have time to go to the demo day, that's fantastic. We'll get you there, give you a chance to see K nine. Uh, they do have a use of force simulator and some other things. So um, I strongly encourage it, and certainly uh, we can get you there, give you a glimpse into uh, the job of a police officer. Um, Project Safe Streets kicked off last week. I'm really excited about this project. I'm excited because it came um, not from a box. It came from uh, the line staff, uh, Corporal Omar Ramirez and Christina Valdez, who was a civilian employee for us, um, both of whom are, are Bulldogs, uh, came and wanted to start a, I guess, an off-the-shelf program, if you will, and uh, which was thirty five thousand dollars. I said, that doesn't sound as good as what you guys are going to do. Um, and so frankly, I think it will be far more successful because it came from the line, um, and it will stay there. So the first uh, part of the project, the first phase, if you will, is set up relationships um, to be seen and get involved in these folks' lives specifically. Uh, we are targeting uh, in, I shouldn't say targeting, we are cooperating with Boys and Girls Club, who have been a fantastic partner in getting to each of their clubhouses. Um, twice a week for the next, well, at least through Christmas, and then we'll uh, look at phase two, which will be more curriculum-based, uh, to try to focus on positive outcomes for these kids. Uh, twenty twenty five is more gang guns and drug cases uh, with our federal partners, uh, Street Crimes Unit participated in seventy five warrants. The significance of this is that our federal partners uh, have more prison time that they can give these folks than what we can in Washington State, so it takes them up the street longer uh, and affects our public a lot longer, uh, which is nice. And we have absolutely incredible relationships with uh, the ATF and both uh, NDA, where we have task force officers assigned, which is fantastic. We've also implemented strategies to address transient issues, including foot patrols, uh, cleanups, try to arrest many people as we can when um, when they're committing crimes and doing those activities. We've been patrolling the parks, trying to clear those out of people that are violating rules. And we're partnering with um, the Chamber of Commerce to come up with trespassing signs. This is idea, I'd love to say that I was original, but I happened to be in Walla Walla, um, ran into these signs everywhere, didn't see anyone who was creating any problems, no one was trespassing. I said, well, this must be a good idea. So we ran it through um, the prosecutor's office. I contacted uh, the chamber, uh, you know, anyone at the chamber, those, those people are doers, and I knew they were the right partners. And I uh, believe we're also partnering with the Downtown Association. Significance of this is it actually uh, takes out a step. So if uh, if a business has this on their building at two o'clock in the morning, we don't have to call anyone to figure out if this person is trespassing, they're just presumed trespassing. Um, and we can move forward from there, uh, which will be very nice. And uh, we can coincide a few months later, if all works out well, with a brand-new jail opening, and you can draw your own conclusions from there. So um, as far as the uh, general fund uh, budget for the police department, I, I would love to say that I am the sole reason it's one point nine percent lower, but uh, I, my budget that I actually presented initially, while very flat, um, was, I think, about a seven tenths of a percent uh, over the uh, twenty twenty five budget. So uh, Madeline uh, did some magic and uh, honestly should be commended. So we did make it a flat budget, and this uh, came about from the captains and myself and admin assistant, who has a lot of uh, contact with their budget, actually projecting it up on screen and saying, okay, where can we cut? Where can we move money? Where can we um, do some magic? And so we were able to look at twenty twenty six dollars and say, okay, maybe we don't need this um, until twenty twenty seven, and uh, you know, see where we're at and, and move around from there. Specifically, in some of the disposal items, the prime example would be like ammunition. Um, we felt that we were in a good spot, and so we didn't have to push anything there. Um, some increased areas in twenty twenty six, uh, certainly have some fluctuation to them. For example, in twenty twenty six, we have uh, eleven to fifteen um, sets of body armor that we have to uh, pick up because we have body armor that's expiring. Um, the uh, those are fifteen hundred bucks a pop, so I mean, that's going to put a dent and increase the budget automatically. Also, those three people that are coming on will need equipment, so that drastically raised it. We did increase our overtime budget pretty significantly. I think you'll see the percentage on that, and that is to try to incorporate some of those uh, events like Spring Fest or significant event, event like a homicide that requires a significant uh, patrol presence and detective presence and maybe even tactical response presence. So uh, try to incorporate that as well as the monies that we're collecting from uh, our federal partners for overtime for detectives. Uh, finally, the, the another increase I'd like to talk about is I am asking for uh, a third captain for this budget and uh, beyond. Initially, I thought it would only be for this budget. I think uh, in reality, in reality, it needs to move forward. Um, this will not be a new FTE, so it will be an existing uh, body that we have, and we will uh, backfill from, from there. But um, I anticipate two significant retirements in twenty seven that will uh, greatly affect the uh, experience and leadership of the PD. So I think any um, front-loading we can do with a captain would be a good thing. We are also in a position, as we grow, that our captains are taking on more, our sergeants have taken on more, and we're really not uh, developing our folks below us like we should. We're not spending as much time as we should, and uh, frankly, the uh, for your police department, I don't know if you guys remember the old movie, Some You May Not Say Anything, where we, we don't make anything bought or sold or buy anything that's been made or, or bought or whatever. Um, the police department's one commodity is our people, and we need to spend some time there and move some things around. So with that, I'd open up for any questions that uh, you may have.
Sure, I had a question, the same, same question I had before, but the forty percent reduction in services?
Yeah. So um, part of this, and, and there may be uh, another, because I saw uh, Madeline jump up and look at me like she didn't trust me to answer it, and I appreciate it, Madeline, because I am going to need you to help on this one. But um, part of that was that hard look and saying, okay, where are we at right now? What does it look like? And is this, is this reality? Then let's move forward with this. Specifically, when you look at um, our operating supplies in both uh, detectives and in um, it'd be operations, but that's basically admin uh, and operations. So we're able to cut some money there. Uh, we also, the, some of the uh, items that we said, hey, we can do without are going to be, uh, come from that as well.
The biggest decrease, though, is in the Red Flex program that we discontinued.
Yeah, I don't see anyone being upset about that. Nope.
No, I haven't heard any complaints thus far, so. Are those going to be removed in their entirety?
I, I kind of don't want them to. They're like the old soapflake police car with the, with the dummy that was inside of it, yeah.
Willie Dam also has that.
Do they?
I speed by it every morning.
Yeah, I did, I did see an email today. Uh, there's just, I'm, I'm asking that the attorneys work together because they um, generally as the middle person, you hear, yep, this is what we want, and we take it to the attorney and they say, no, that's not going to work. They need to do this. We send it back. And instead of playing ping pong like that, I suggest the attorneys get together. So that's somewhere in process.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Alright.
We've got one more budget that is also.
Mr. Perillo, is that?
No, it's actually, uh, it's, it's Captain Sands as well. It's the Grants and Donations Fund.
Why do you, Damo, I don't understand that.
I'm sorry, Chief Sands.
Yes, I didn't catch that either.
Yeah, I didn't think it was going to be me. So uh, the other operating funds and uh, donations, this is um, excuse me, other operating funds. Uh, these are the funds that we talked about when we were talking about the purchase of the Bearcat. Uh, we talked about it at the CIP meeting. We talked about it at one of the council meetings. Um, and so just wanted to go through um, some of these. So um, because I think, actually, mayor, I think you asked maybe about the funding sources, if I remember right. So the police department gets money every year, and I think I called it like an unsolicited grant, I think when we talked about it before, when I um, uh, in the council meeting, and specifically we get criminal justice called high crimes, low population, uh, violent crimes. And so that's quite a mouthful, so we just call it high crimes uh, to encompass all of that piece. And this uh, PD gets roughly one hun- don't, don't quote me exact on this, but a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in, in those funds. Uh, we also get funds through forfeiture seizures, which uh, predominantly are drug seizures, uh, all with drug cases. Although we do get some felony seizures, they get a little bit uh, stickier, but um, and those are earmarked specifically for drug enforcement. We can't use it for another law enforcement. I suppose we could use it for drug uh, education, but we can't use it anywhere else.
And so the theory there is it's proceeds from drugs, so in some regard a victimless crime, so there's no restitution of monies, so it's just leftover. Is that the idea?
Yeah, correct, although there is some, um, and I'd have to look back on the twenty yes, felony crimes, you do have to pay the restitution, you have to.
Right. So if somebody robs a bank, you don't get to keep the money and buy a Bearcat with it?
Uh, no, although, but no, no, we do not. So, and then we also have canine donations. This is uh, specifically directed towards day-to-day operation or, excuse me, uh, supplies for canine's food, some training. Um, if the canine handler's going to travel, it uh, it pays for the uh, boarding fees for the animal and whatnot. So um, so we, well, I guess tactical response team, although that fund is, is internally funded, so there, there's nothing any longer going into that fund. It is pretty uh, static um, where it is at. And so once if given approval to move forward, once by the purchase of the Bearcat, that fund will be very low, um, and eventually may even go away unless we start uh, saving as we have up till now for the last five years, start saving for a new uh, Bearcat to replace and so on and so forth. So uh, so really the focus here is on the high crimes uh, money, which again is uh, by statute is meant for uh, criminal justice items, so law enforcement items, things to fight crime. We've been using this for the last few years, A, to save up for Bearcat for the, those expenses, but we also use it for one-time uh, expenses and/or replacement expenses. So I think the example I gave at the uh, one of the meetings was that we just purchased a new server because it came out of nowhere and we didn't have it budgeted, but we did have this available, um, and it is a server just for us to store uh, digital evidence, so essentially digital evidence on. And so we use it for that. We've used it, uh, that's how our body cam uh, program started. It funded our flock cameras for a year. Um, currently, we are replacing all of our uh, tasers, and this fund is doing it. If we have a new program or one-time cost, we may try it out of this fund, so it doesn't affect the general fund. And then if it's an ongoing cost, uh, see if we can move it into the general fund. So that is what we've been using that money for, and it is uh, unfortunately, law enforcement has become technologically and uh, equipments um, heavy. And so that is what that uh, predominantly has been used for. So I don't know if you have any questions on that. I know in the uh, the packet that it gives some um, obviously, the biggest expense is the Bearcat. That is uh, the number one item that we're used, uh, looking to spend that on. Um, and then there's some other potentials, I think, that I said, including tasers. I think I put in there as a potential, just so you weren't surprised, a drone. Um, as a drone first responder, we, we won't be doing that, but there may be some other things, again, from a technological standpoint, that we may uh, uh, come back and ask to spend out of that. So.
Do we have a drone operator on staff now?
We do. We have uh, PD has two drones. I think we have three. We might have a, I'm, but I don't think the tactical one's working. So we have two primary uh, drones. I think we have five or six pilots.
Great.
They, they make sure I call them pilots, and they want helmets, but uh, so far, I've only can uh, committed to calling them pilots.
It's chair force, that's what that's.
Chair force. I like that. Actually, I might get t-shirts for them.
Council member Lombardi?
Um, question for you, Madeline. Um, were the forfeiture and seizures last year, were they in a separate fund?
No, they're also included in this particular fund. It's just a separate line items to track them.
Right, so in other words, they were in one oh three last year?
Yes.
Okay. Were all the uh, breakouts here, because there's nine items here, were they all in last year in one oh three as well?
Yes.
Okay, just, I'm not seeing the numbers match up, so that's why I'm asking. I'm not seeing the numbers match up, so that's why I'm asking. So on the one that for this year's handout, we have a twenty twenty four actual, we have five oh one, one ninety four. And then in last year's handout, which I grabbed a sheet, um, the actual was three, three, eight, two, four, seven. And the same thing with twenty twenty three, the numbers don't match up. So I'm trying to figure out why the numbers don't match up.
I would have to look at what you're looking at to see what you're looking at.
You want to take a look at it now?
We can. We can definitely follow back up. I can follow up with you.
That's fine.
Take a look at it.
I have one question on this um this account too. Is this account something the auditor in your experience pays particular attention to?
Not particularly. Um, it it just depends on what their focus is on each year. Um, they do definitely look at grants, um especially when we're talking federal grants. Um, we have a a single audit for that, in fact. Um, so they do scrutinize those grants very closely. Um, some of those grants come into this fund, but some of them also go into the actual operating funds as well. So it just depends on the grant.
Yeah, that wasn't a question based on any inclination I had about this department. I just, it's such a unique funding source, right, as opposed to any any other thing we have. So.
Right. And this is not just the the um high crimes uh fund as well. As you can see, we also have donations for parks. We have museum grants or donations coming into this fund as well. So it's kind of a for lack of a better word, it's a catchall for granted donations for various departments across. We get funding from I believe last year, you may recall that we got donations for both police and fire um of a thousand dollars each. That goes into this fund as well.
Great. Thank you.
And that wraps up the budget workshop unless there are further questions.
I think we're good. Thank you, Madeline and staff. Next item of old business we have to discuss this evening is sustainable water sources strategy. And for this, I will be turning it over to our Assistant Public Works Director, Lee Ramsey.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I believe Tamara's gonna pull up our slide deck. Um, so just kind of to preface what we're gonna discuss tonight, back on September sixteenth, we had our all day meeting that I affectionately termed the Water, Water, Water Meeting. And so we are going to review today that white paper that we had provided you talking about the search for sustainable water sources. Um, we at that September sixteenth meeting had discussed the fact that we were going to come back to you if you had the opportunity to digest that information and ask that you give us some guidance on what strategies you would like us to focus on going forward. So I do have a slide deck. We'll do a quick review of what was in that document, and then we'll open it up for discussion afterwards. She's working on getting it pulled up for you.
I believe you have that as a hard copy handout. And yeah, so you have both the slide deck and the paper. So you can follow on on the hard copy field if you'd like.
And there we go. All right. So first slide, please. So as you may recall, we were discussing our main goal with um realistically, we're looking at trying to ensure our resilient and sustainable water future for the city and looking at options for ways that we can reduce our reliance on our declining resource, which is that deep basalt aquifer and support projected growth over the next three decades. So we after discussion, we had um determined that we were looking at acquiring an additional twelve thousand seven hundred acre feet of water rights from sources other than the deep basalt aquifer by the year twenty fifty six. You can go next slide, Tamara. We'd broken those down into some milestone goals, and um there is an edit to this, so I'll highlight that when we get to it, but we looked at um by twenty, you know, in twenty twenty five, we were recognizing we currently have about nine thousand five hundred acre feet of our water right portfolio in use, which is a combination of both deep and some shallow aquifer uh water rights. We are looking at by twenty thirty six, wanting to acquire acquire an additional fifty two hundred acre feet and put those into production. By twenty forty six, and this is where you will see an edit, um, we are looking at reducing our reliance on our deep basalt aquifer rights completely. So in discussion with council, um, we were understanding, and hopefully we interpret it correctly, that you were wanting to kind of reduce all use of those deep rights. So you'll see that reduction by eight thousand acre feet of deep basalt water right use and then acquire an additional seven thousand acre feet in twenty forty six. By twenty fifty six, we'd be looking at the additional thirty five hundred acre feet be acquired and in production for a total of twelve thousand seven hundred new acre feet or a grand total of seven thousand two hundred acre feet of water in production. So we'd be looking at acquiring new rights as well as reducing our deep soil aquifer right use. Tamara, you can go next slide.
Can we can we pause it there for go back to that slide? It just, I just want to pause and get a sense from the council. Does this look okay to you? Are these good goals?
Yeah, I think actually, just prior to the meeting, Councilmember Lombardi and I did have a discussion regarding um the strategy of possibly using the deep basalt aquifer water as a a bridge. It so is that, I mean, is that still on the table? I know we're the end goal is to reduce our our reliance on that water source completely, which I still agree with, but I mean, that depending on the the amount of growth in the next ten years, that may need to be part of the solution. Um, I have a, I mean, personally, based on some of the numbers we've received lately, as far as the number of E R U's in each pressure zone, I'm a little more optimistic that maybe some of these other, you know, we can, we can hold out for some of the better solutions, but I think your consensus was we wanted to definitely make sure that was considered.
Yeah, so it's always been this no, no, no on those, so to speak, just because it's not a real good long term strategy, and I I get that part. Um, and the mayor and I are both in agreement that we still need to really pursue the final solution. But I keep on looking at these costs on PFOS remediation and so forth, and I don't have actual numbers on these deep uh drilling issues. And so we know they're in the millions, but you know, wh- what's the lesser of two evils, right? I mean, this well thirty four you know, is really, yeah, it has the magnet ease issue, but at the same time, we also don't have water rights to it. So it's almost like an imaginary concept. Um, so I just was curious as to if maybe we can get some numbers to see if that is a feasibility as far as if we get into a pinch as we continue to grow, because companies are coming. And so we're going to need housing. That's it.
Mark, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I mean, two two things uh for for me, and and I guess similarly, I wasn't part of that conversation, so but but I I I I do think in looking at this slide deck, I think the good news is we're not, we're not talking about getting rid of all of a sudden drawing a line in the sand and saying, no, no deep water. So I appreciate that. Um, but I I was thinking the same thing, as we keep talking about these huge numbers of of uh filtration type systems and stuff. In the meantime, I mean, we we really haven't discussed what would it take to drill another deep well somewhere else. Um, uh uh because we do have the water right, correct? I mean, the the rights for those deep are there. I know it's expensive, but so is that filtration system. And and so I guess that I think I I'm on board with that. We we've kind of like abandoned that idea of of another deep deep well somewhere because because it's not a long term solution. But on the same token, um, I think we have to look at it at at the very least. So I'm kind of in in agreement. I mean, I don't I hate to 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 say what's the most important here. And 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 we got to do some prioritizing, but it's all important. I mean, I hate to say that, but but um or or we've got to ramp up our efforts to figure out how to to get things converted to shallow water. But but even then, um, so how long has thirty four been and from the point of when we got approved to drill a well? I mean, how many years ago was that? Richard's not here, but I can tell you that it's I've heard him talk about. Oh, yeah, though, it's been at least five or six.
I was gonna, I was gonna guess seven, but.
So so.
It's been a while, yes.
Quick, and I would think deep water. I mean, just to get the the hole in the ground, I know it's expensive, but it's still got to go through all the exact same approval processes, correct? I mean, and and would like to think that if it's deep water, maybe in a different area, maybe we don't have to have the same filtration problem. Um, so I I I think we do need to to look at that because that's the water right in hand. It's it's the one we have, but I but I mean, the the end goal is definitely not there. So.
And I believe we're we're only using about eight thousand of our thirteen thousand?
Yep.
Deep water rights? Acre feet.
Yep.
I I have another question. Has anybody done, and and again, Richard's not here. Um, are are there any that we're aware of in in industrial areas or anywhere that are there any deep holes for water private? Do we know? Or no, 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 on city limits. I'm not talking.
I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but just ecology, we all know what's out here. I was gonna say, if we can get, we could probably get drill logs from county.
Ecology, ecology.
Ecology, yeah.
I I I would be interested to know i- if there is, because there might be a an opportunity there. It it'd be one thing if the hole's there already. We had to buy some infrastructure, you know, or do some sort of public private partnership with some water rights or something. I don't know. Just trying to think outside the box to get something quicker than sooner, but and I I mean, I I've got I'm sure through ecology and and some consultants that we've used in the past, and I'm I got a feeling people know.
Yeah, I think this thing to sort out, I mean, a a shallow well is what, four hundred feet, five hundred feet? So half roughly, but it's probably not the filtration alone is more than half the cost of drilling the hole, is it not?
It depends on what we end up pulling out of the hole.
Yeah.
Um, not all groundwater is created equally.
Those those are kind of the the variables floating around in my mind.
Yes.
And then, you know, are there areas, even if we drill deep in certain areas of town, the potential for contamination is greater, right?
Correct.
And particularly nasty contamination in some cases. So are there opportunities? I'm not a hydrologist or an ecologist or whatever you want to call it. Uh, but I mean, has anybody identified where in town one of these could go?
So our water rights consultant has done some work to identify some areas that could be additional possible deep wells. Um, again, it's not a perfect science. We aren't sure fully where those pockets of water are. Um, so we run the risk of if we drill, we might have one that doesn't produce for very long, or we might have to go deeper. And that's just a risk we would have to take, but they do have some locations identified. And I think Chad has a couple of them that he would prefer if we were to consider additional deep wells that we look in those locations. So.
Good. All right, well, that, I mean, I think that kind of makes things easy or to a degree. Councilmember Myers?
I was just gonna say that we did uh drill a deep well right here in this park, I believe, and it didn't produce. So they had to cap it off. I mean, there is a risk. And with that resource dwindling, we're gonna spend the money to go down to only use it for a little bit. I mean, it's yeah. weighing out those options, but uh I I'm more in favor of, yeah, pursuing the shallow well and putting more effort into transitioning, if possible, those rights. So.
Thank you, Don. Councilmember Scog?
By definition, what's a deep well or what's a shallow well? You know?
Well, you know, around like seven hundred feet, but I guess you could say less than a thousand. You know, nine hundred, thousand, somewhere in there. I mean, I don't know, levels everywhere throughout the city, but roughly.
The source of water.
I mean, our our deep ones, some deep ones are twelve hundred. So if you want to call it twelve hundred, consider it a deep one.
I think what you're, are you asking what makes it different?
Yeah.
It's the source of water.
I guess I misunderstood.
Yeah, that's ancient water, whereas the shallow water has moved through the water cycle at a much greater rate than deep water.
Well, I I still can't get past my head that the canal was never built and agriculture uses ninety percent of the water coming out of the aquifer that has junior water rights to our senior water rights. I'm still stuck on that. If they gave away water from a source that we had senior rights to, I can't understand why they say, well, we'll replace those rights with rights to here. And I, you know, I think we need to have a real aggressive um legal uh pursuit of of demanding that they change those rights. I mean, they gave away the water that we had senior rights to. I that that makes.
Yeah, dude, go ahead. Yeah. Yeah, um, I tend to agree with you that that is a a slide coming up here and two or three slides from now. But I think that that does warrant discussion. Uh, so we will talk about that in a minute, but as far as this milestone goals, even if you if even if you do direct us to um drill a basalt aquifer or two, they might only last about twenty years. And so I'm recommending that this these goals that you have here probably still work.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so if there's consensus on this slide that you have here.
Councilmember Lombardi did have a comment before we.
Um, I don't know if you know this, so if we wanted to pursue deep uh assault drilling, it are they eligible for grants?
Off the top of my head, we would have to look into um where they'd be located, who they're going to be serving. There might be grant opportunities, but it is going to be more likely not mean based when it comes to water, or it's going to be water quality related. So um off the top of my head, I can't tell you one.
Okay, I wasn't sure it was an automatic no or not. So because if we're eligible and we can get a grant, then we don't have anything to lose, you know, on that particular drill site. So that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Victor. Okay.
Yeah, so um if I if there's consensus on this slide, um, then we can move on to the next slide. Is that all right? Okay, which are the short term actions?
You guys kind of already answered the question. So we were looking at short term actions, and we had a couple of options for you, which were uh looking at our can do in our conservation measures. Our goal would be to maintain an overall reduction of about five hundred acre feet saved per year. And Chad was looking at calculating that based off of um estimated use. So as we continue to grow, we'd be looking at trying to keep that reduction down and encouraging our citizens to conserve whenever possible, since we live in a desert. So there's that option. And then the second option was to drill additional deep basalt wells. So kind of already gave your opinion on that one, which is great. Um, and so as far as moving forward on those, we can bring back for you. Uh, Councilmember Lombardi, you mentioned wanting to know some dollar figures for drilling those wells. We can bring back that information to you for further discussion, as well as those locations that Chad's identified.
Okay. Um. Go ahead.
I I'm not sure I heard from four of you saying that you wanted to pursue the uh deep basalt wells. Do you want us to at least come back to you with costs and some analysis on it?
There's three for sure. It looks like four. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I think I think there's four. I don't know who the fourth one is. Okay, all right.
Um, on this, maybe I just missed it completely, but uh we've talked a couple of times about system loss. So I I completely understand the logic of not highlighting that so much in this document. Um, but it is something we should be aware of. So just in our budgeting, our C I P, are there things we're doing to get that number down? I think it was close to twenty percent. Um, is there?
Still has it in his budget, and you'll hear it on the twenty second, uh that leak detection program that they're still continuing to do to identify areas of town.
But we haven't identified any projects within that to fix the leak.
No.
Okay.
That I can, yeah, no.
You do look at possibly addressing some of those as we're doing like the A C water main replacement program, some of those older pipes, things that maybe are a slow leak, something that's not easily detectable. Those will be addressed as we're doing water main replacements, but nothing major at this time, because to the best of my knowledge.
Yeah, I understand. It's it's a death by a thousand cuts scenario in most instances, right? Yeah.
So Brian and I were talking about that, and and Brian, you're not convinced that it's actually twenty percent because of uh Because of uh, when the meters are read compared to, I can't remember what you were saying. Can you?
So each well has its flow meter, which is coming out of the ground, goes to that flow meter. It has its big total read. And then as it goes out, each ERU goes through a meter, obviously gets calculated to take that big number from the well and all the ten thousand connections we have and figure out that number to make sure it's jiving with that well production. Obviously, there's more than one, right? But take the total number and then each well to kind of get that happy medium to where where are we meeting? Are we over? Are we under? Like exactly where we're at. And as we implement these new meters are more accurate, more efficient, we can really narrow that down.
Okay.
So yeah, because it's still gonna take a little bit of time, that project's gonna go through twenty eight, so coming soon. Hopefully, we can really narrow it down.
Okay.
Cause yeah, different meters are on different billing cycles and get rid read at different times of the month.
I understand.
So wasn't it, that was part of the reason why we're um, a little bit incredulous that it's actually twenty percent.
So next to most wells, there is a reservoir, correct?
Uh, for the most part, yeah.
So is there?
The ones that they'll fill.
There are flow meter on each reservoir as well?
I don't know if there's one that comes out of the each reservoir. Not a hundred percent sure. I know there is coming out of the ground, though.
Okay, for sure.
Brian, you're you're um, feeling more confident that as we get those smart meters installed, we'll have better real time numbers.
I think we'll have some pretty accurate data with those.
When we have intermediate meters as well, or something just like uh, when you did the steel water main replacement on Wheeler, I think there was a a meter put in L in Wheeler.
Yeah, it was, if I remember right, there's a uh, flow meter in there.
Yeah. Okay.
And which the new ones obviously are more efficient, right? I mean, they just read more accurate, but like I say, and then as we get these meters in, some understanding that we'll be able to read all of them. They're on the same cycle, so the confusion won't be there as far as this cycle, the next cycle, the next cycle, then try to get that data to where it equals the actual flow coming out of the ground.
Okay. Yeah, it's just having these numbers as accurate as possible is crucial to telling the story. So, yeah.
And Brian, how far along are we in getting the smart meters installed throughout the city?
Oh, Mattlin might know more than me. Um, I think it's a roughly, we're close to about a third.
And and when will we be at a hundred percent?
Our goal is twenty twenty eight. And you guys probably see on our expenditure reports, there's some big dollars that are coming out for these meters. So uh, crews are working every day replacing swapping them out.
Okay.
All right, we'll go next slide, please, Tamara. So looking at long term solutions, we have a couple um, different slides pertaining to long term, because it's really a multi-pronged approach. So we have uh, new sustainable water sources, looking at shallow aquifers. So um, top bullet point there is working with Department of Ecology on what we've discussed with you is that swap, right, for for shallow water rights for um, the deep if we can. So looking at doing what they would call a non additive change request. So we are working with them actively trying to determine if we can do that, so that hopefully we can do things like get well thirty four online and have enough shallow water rights to um, look at additional shallow wells. We could also go out and purchase water rights for shallow um, on the open market. But as we discussed, that has been cost prohibitive um, thus far. So the other option is a policy change. We discussed a little bit, the um, having developments bring rights with them. So as we're looking at new development occurring, there's always been the option to pay the fee in lieu of if they didn't have water rights to provide to us. And looking at maybe we now require that they bring a shallow water rights as part of the opportunity to develop.
Can we go to the first bullet and talk about that a little bit more? That's Councilmember Scog's point that he was making earlier. Um, I'm not necessarily convinced that our first opening position needs to be a trade. Um, perhaps our first opening position might be what Councilmember Scog was just describing, where our rights have been given away to temporary junior rights and DOE has to make up for that. Um, and um, and that might even, I just thought of this just now, but that might even be telling them that they gotta build dig a drill some uh, basalt uh, aquifers too, in the meantime, until they get us, get it figured out. I don't know. I just, I just thought of that. Um, but I I'm recommending that that be our first position before we fall back to a trade position.
Yeah, I think, I mean, for me, as far as the priorities of what we do first, even this would be my first priority. What we, what we do in our plan. But beyond that even, yes, I don't. I mean, it's a pretty compelling story.
Yeah, I mean, we would not be in this situation if DOE had not granted temporary junior rights to that same aquifer that we have senior first in light.
Right.
And I rights to.
I don't believe that that in any way puts us in an adversarial position with our neighbors being our agricultural neighbors. I just don't, you know? So, Councilmember Lombardi.
Um, I think you and I were talking one day. Um, there's some other cities that have the same issue, right? So would it make sense if we're going to pursue this to pursue it with other cities as well? Just from the standpoint that we're not being adversarial to the state. When it comes, especially when it comes to asking for grants.
I'm in agreement with that. Councilmember Scog.
Um, I don't have a problem being adversarial with the state. Um, I I think, I think, I think they would be embarrassed if the, if that publicly got out that they gave away our water rights. And I think they would do everything they could to to satisfy our needs without us blowing the horn that they gave it away. So I I don't, I think we should put some pressure on it and say, no, it's not, not mother may I, but you know, dang it, give us back the water. Um, and I would rather spend attorney's fees, sorry Catherine, but I'd rather spend attorney's fees than drilling holes. Uh, um, I'd rather get and sue them for a permanent solution, but they gave away our water. And and they need to deal with it.
Thank you, Dave. Councilmember Fancher.
Yeah, point, point well taken, Councilman Scog. I I uh, I I think a lot of the same, and and I think it's just about making this whole. You know, where where would we be today? I mean, I don't know how many times we've heard from our staff that it's not a water right issue. We have all the water rights that that we need right now, but we can't get it. You know, and 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 if the bucket was full, we wouldn't be wasting as much time as we're wasting on all this. And so I think pursuing it is is great. Um, I it it's a problem. I mean, whether uh, in regards to what Councilman Lombardi said, I think if we're first in, we're not going to be alone. So we might as well think about that strategy too with, I mean, just even our Grant County partners. You know, um, we've got lots of cities. I don't know of any city in Grant County that's not affected. Um, and it's much bigger than that. But I mean, I I mean, they're all in the same near and dear issue, so uh, we can talk about it all we want, but I think it it is one that I want to push to the top as far as, I don't, what's next step? How do we do it?
Councilmember Martinez.
And some of you might have read the link or, and I know I sent it to Robert initially. Um, you know, Yakima and Kittensas County are um, under those water restrictions. And so I I'd be very interested to see um, what the state's uh, stance is on that, because my understanding is they said senior water rights have permission. Junior water rights do not. It when uh, they uh, started those uh, restrictions. So um, there is somewhat a precedent, if that's truly what happened over there. So it's something that uh, definitely, I think we should pursue. Um, I'm not as adversarial as Helsman Scog. Unless it's between him and me, but um, but I do have a question for you, Catherine, is that uh, uh, what would be your recommendation? Do we go all in with partners or on our own first?
I think my recommendation would be that we start, I know that staff has had some initial conversations with folks at DOE and has floated some of these concepts by. Um, and we're waiting for some, for some responses. I think based on the responses that we get with these more friendly conversations, then we talk about next steps. And strategically speaking, you know, when you're dealing with the state, um, the more angry villagers at their doorstep that are partner public agencies, I might be more influential. But then you're also competing with the same people who are wanting the same water that you want. So I I just think there's more conversation that needs to be had.
I think part of that would be determining how much water we think there is here first. Yeah. Councilmember Lombardi.
Uh, Catherine, you uh, beat me to the question. So uh, it sounds like the discovery stage is somewhat started then by having staff kind of feel them out in essence, right? Okay, that's what I was wondering if we even got to that stage yet. Okay, so that'll, that'll give us a little bit. Uh, that'll really tell us more which is the best route to go. Right? Okay, thank you.
And if I can add to that, so Richard's been in conversations for quite a few months now with DOE on the swap idea of trading basalt for shallow. Um, I'm recommending that we back off that idea for now and actually talking about making us whole like Councilmember Fancher just said.
Councilmember Scog.
I think the danger was waiting for more villagers is that it just gets kicked down the road farther and farther. I mean, we've waited thirty years for super funds that had Larson. Um, I uh, I don't, if there, we wait for a consensus. I mean, somebody has to jump off the cliff first and then all the other penguins will follow. So I think um, somewhere along the line, I don't, I don't think, I think we should be somewhat nasty. And 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 just push it, because everybody's just gonna go, we'll get back here. Well, let's consider that. Well, we'll think about that. Well, you know, we can't do that. And and um, I think we, I think we should um, be real aggressive, very aggressive.
For the record, I prefer your second term to your first term. Aggressive is better than nasty. Okay. But I agree with you nonetheless, so.
And I could say one more thing. I and I don't think it's about kicking anybody off the basalt aquifer, right? Because the damage has already been done to that aquifer. So it really is about them getting us other rights um, other than the basalt aquifer.
Yeah, and I I think we have a lot of allies here where, you know, this is a major employment center for food processing. And so many of our residents are directly affected by the ag trade here. So it's, it's all a symbiotic relationship. Um, so it's, it's again, it's a very compelling story for me. Um, and I would, I would appreciate to approach it as Dave suggested aggressively, but positively. Again, I think it's a story where it's a it's a corrective action that should help everybody. So, including the environment maybe along the way, which is always a plus for some people in our state. So um, again, for me, I think this should be the the first thing we're we're approaching. Um, at this point, we have, I think, Aspect Consulting working on our water. And then who who else? Martin Law? Or how would that, I mean, if we were to consult with legal tomorrow on something like this, who would we reach?
It would not be Martin Law. Um, they're they're environmental lawyers. Um, so they're focused on the PFOS, PFOA. We've used um, a couple envi- or water lawyers, uh, actually out of Yakima, who are quite knowledgeable in the state water rights as far as junior, senior, surface, shallow, deep water. Um, and that's probably who I would would talk to first.
Okay. And typically, does this involve a consultant as well, something like this, or this?
No, this is a legal argument under the, under the current statute.
All right. So what do we need to do to get that process initiated? Is there an RFP or?
No, I think the direction I'm hearing is that we need to move sooner than we had previously discussed in getting um, outside council um, some options to the council to consider.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Just can I ask a hypothetical? What's the timeframe for us to collect or or to get a decision? It's like the process. Is it three years, five years, ten years? Because I I remember my old real estate law teacher said, it's great to win the case, it's even better to collect. And that's kind of what I'm wondering about. I mean, will any of us be here?
I I would, I would expect litigation like this because of the ramifications it would have uh, across the state for other jurisdictions in our situation, that will have a very vigorous defense by the state. And so I would expect that the trial date would not be quick. Uh, it's going to be a a complex trial. It's likely to be in Thurston County because we're suing the state. Oh, go ahead.
Well, we're we're talking legal strategy right now, and I'd rather talk about it in an exact session.
Well, that's fine.
And we, and we can adjourn adjourn right now into exact session if you want. It's up to you. And we can come back out in ten minutes.
Well, I wasn't, if I can redefine my question, uh, City Manager, it it isn't a legal strategy. I just want to know what, how long it, how long these cases take on average.
So I would.
Much more, how much money is involved?
I I would guess that you're you're between three and five years getting to trial if it were to go to trial. And depending on what remedy the judge ordered, the issue of collecting or being, you know, what what your remedy was uh, would depend on on what the judge's order uh, crafted as the appropriate remedy.
But um, short of going to trial, um, pursuing a legal option can actually get you to a political option more quickly.
Yeah.
Um, because it would get their attention. And then rather than dealing with the whole legal process and everything, they might want to work with us and get us to a solution short of all the legal work.
Okay. I think we can kick those tires a little further. Okay.
Well, there's those other two options up there as well. Um, the open market, we've, we got sticker shock on how much that costs. Um, so uh, maybe that's not one we drive hard on right now. We we keep our pulse on the market, right, and see if there's opportunities that come up, but it's not something we put all our cards in right now. Okay. And then what do you think about this policy change of requiring new development to provide rights in instead of fee and lieu?
I mean, it's proving hard for us to buy water rights, so it's a pretty steep expectation.
So so I guess th- this policy change, are you talking about within the city limits already?
We would be talking about all development. You you would have to consider that it within city limits, we also are like limited infill at this point, things are.
Oh, the reason I say that, I mean, I I'm not prepared to do that, and especially within city limits. These people have bought property in city limits. And we, with a stroke of a pen, take their value away from them. Bought a thirty acre parcel in the city three or four years ago with a plan, a ten year plan, and all of a sudden I just lost all my value because I don't have any ability to get water.
So if you were looking at making a policy change, there are other options for how you want to define that too. We could look at do you only want development that is coming requesting to annex in or be in the urban growth area to provide water rights? I mean, we we've I mean, we've got some options. We can come up with something for your policy change.
Councilmember Scog.
Mark, I had a question. If, if, if somebody planning on, I can in lieu of and sell the water rights for more, and that's the value I'm gonna lose?
Right now, most of the people in the city don't have water rights.
Right.
So that option, what you just, what you just explained doesn't, doesn't happen. They can't do it because they don't have them to begin with. In, in the city limits, for the most part, most people have, well, didn't have them or, or had, they were gone a long time ago.
Right.
I'm not talking about it. What, what Lee and I went into was now if you're in the UGA or some other deal where maybe you are farming or doing different things, that's, that's a little different. But my question was this policy development provide with any development? I'm definitely not excited about if it's already in those city limits. Not having that. First of all.
They have to get their own water, right?
That's what, that's what this policy would do.
Okay, no, I agree. Thank you.
You put it in front of us, I get it. I 100% get it. I don't, I'm not upset that you're thinking all the options. Don't take that wrong, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not interested in that. I think one of the things we've talked about is, you know, same thing, sticker, we keep getting sticker shock, right? You know, on, on the cost of water, and that's why that fee and lieu has to mirror that. You know, how, maybe that policy also needs, we need to take a look at how that works.
That's where I would go.
Because, because that fee and lieu has to be as much pain as what it's going to cost us. When you're in that scenario. So, so I mean, there's a way to do it. But, but I think it's just a little more complex than tonight. But, but I also think money well spent, at least to kick that can at the legislature in DOE. As far as just honoring the commitment they made to us years ago.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think, like when Mark said, I agree with him 100%. I mean, I think this is, this requires a little bit longer discussion with a chalkboard and so forth. But I, I think what you were touching on afterwards, those, some of those might have some pragmatic feasibility to them. But this, the way it sits right now, I don't think so.
Okay.
What I'm hearing is explore the fee and lieu.
Fee and lieu.
And see if it's adequate or if it needs to be increased.
Yeah. And that's conversation. I mean, some of this is cost to deliver, obviously. And then as the gallons per ERU or the ERU goes down, the cost per gallon to deliver goes up actually, right? So all of those things we've kind of been talking about, but including fee and lieu and what that would look like in that matrix, so.
All right. So Tamara, if you'd advance us, please. Next, we were going to look at long-term as far as surface water. So we had proposed to you really three major options, which we'd be looking at municipal and industrial contract with the Bureau of Reclamation and looking at gaining access to local canals. Doing a direct pipeline to the Columbia River for surface water or an M and I contract for direct lake access. So utilizing Moses Lake to gain access to the Bureau of Water that is run through it to fill the potholes reservoir.
Anybody? I'll jump in then, I guess. I have a preference, but the, the second option I particularly enjoy. Predominantly because it wouldn't only serve us. So there's definitely an opportunity for regionalization with that initiative. And it's, it's direct, as the name implies, or states explicitly, it's for us only. Uninterruptible, right? So the major challenge with that is legally how to develop a multi-jurisdictional water utility, right? But there's a blueprint there because we have irrigation districts and other things of that nature, so. The canal access, so I've also heard of ideas that hybridize number one and two. So utilizing the canal easements to install the pipeline. Which may be more circuitous, but could be easier in the long run because the, the real estate's already there. As we witnessed with the PUD recently and trying to build transmission across the county, you know, depending on where you're trying to go, that's the biggest hurdle, right? So if the path has already been cleared, that could be a huge opportunity. So well, right, that's the thing is where is the extraction point then? If it's Banks Lake and then are we, we're beholden, right, we're back to the same scenario as you would just if you were sucking right out of the canal. Councilmember Lombardi.
So I'm assuming, listing the three options, that you've seen some concepts?
We have had discussions. I have not seen a lot of concepts. We've seen one that was looking at canal access. We had a discussion with Port of Moses Lake. They had some ideas for things that could be done. It's very in its infancy, so not, not something that we've done a lot of deep dives into. The direct lake access is one that we've been in discussion with.
Right.
Yeah, to attempt to gain it through Moses Lake. So that way we could have a surface water treatment facility or smaller ones.
So my second question was based on the first one. So of the, of these three, can you put in order, if possible, which ones require the least amount of agency approval?
Possibly, but I also think you're gonna have to have legislative changes as well. So where you might end up with least amount of agency approval, you're gonna require some larger changes to occur for some of them.
Because these are almost like trying to get another bridge built.
Yes. It's, it's your long game, not quick solutions. Yes.
I understand. Okay, if we're gonna take a shot and ask that question.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I did take the initiative of meeting with a representative of USPR over in Efrida, and that gentleman, and I mean, it's worth keeping all of this in mind because there are personalities involved with this at every level, right? And his general belief is that surface water from the lake is just a bad option for a number of reasons. So the Bureau's stance, at least locally, is gonna be a little bit less in favor of surface water collection from the lake. It's just the reality of it right now. And I tend to agree, the, the river water is far, far cleaner.
Can I jump in?
Yep.
And Lee mentioned the partnership with the port. They, they are looking at tapping into, is it West Low 20 or just W 20, whatever it's called?
I believe it's just W 20.
W 20. So just west of the port, there is a canal there called W 20, and they want to build a pipeline from there that would then fill up the lake more in the shoulder seasons when, you know, high agricultural uses and using it. And then use the lake for storage for this, for us to draw from during the summertime. We don't know if that's possible yet and whether we would be allowed to use the lake for storage. But that is something that the port is wanting us to partner with them on. Another one, another partnership, well, not really a partnership, but we have the East Low Canal within a stone's throw, literally within a stone's throw of the Public Works Operations Center. One thing we were thinking about with that one is we could, we could draw from that during shoulder seasons and build a gigantic in-ground reservoir that we could fill up in the shoulder seasons and then use for the entire city. So Brian, feel free to jump in on that.
Yeah, I know we talked this, what goes back a couple of years ago, that we've had discussions on it. There's a lot to it. Obviously, from that particular location and then actually connecting to city infrastructure down here, it's obviously a distance. And then how would that look like? And obviously, costs associated with it. So, I mean, I don't remember if you, I can't remember off the top of my head what that, there was a proposed dollar amount. Do you remember what it was? I know we kind of briefly thought, it was a lot.
Yeah, it was 20 million just for the treatment facility and then, and then infrastructure to connect, which was another 10.
Something somewhere around there.
And that's probably a three-year-old estimate at this point.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, I mean, I think at one point we were talking about, you know, between 50 and $100 million solution, right? Which would be like the 50-year solution or something, so.
So we're recommending that we keep all three of those on the table for now. And keep exploring them.
Yeah, part of this is going to be who we determine our partners to be. Some of them may not exist in the county. Lind would be one that I think of. But again, the opportunities for some of these solutions aren't as readily available to some of those entities. So the, the legislative fixes would be more universal. Where some of the infrastructure stuff may not be.
All right, next slide, please, Tamara. So then we're also looking at extending the life of our deep basalt aquifer. We were talking about preserving and conserving, right? And that could be assisting with advocating for the Columbia Basin Irrigation Project to be completed. Continuing to advocate for the Odessa Groundwater Replacement Program and conservation efforts. So again, long-term, those things are things we can continue to advocate for and try and reduce the strain on deep basalt.
And those first two bullets under preserve conserve, those are just purely advocacy? They're not requiring a capital investment from us?
Right. I mean, this is, we're talking about the deep aquifer here, so.
Just trying to keep access to it for as long as we can.
Yeah, no, I know. And there's, I mean, the ag users have done quite a bit of conservation over the years. I don't know how many fewer gallons they can use out of their circles today. Right, I mean, they've cut it down by probably 70% since I've been alive. Yeah, right.
All right, we'll continue on looking at advocacy efforts. So we're kind of looking at three different options here and of continuing a lot of these regional engage our regional professionals. So we don't currently have a regional professional to help advocate at a regional level for water solutions, long-term water solutions. Or really be our mover and shaker to try and get those partnerships built and look at the feasibility of some of these things, of those discussions. So we're looking at engaging a regional professional, continue to work with our local and regional groups. So I don't believe that we did a full slide on them, but Richard has been engaged in a lot of local groups. You're looking at the, you know, Columbia Basin Development League, looking at the Columbia River Water. There's a policy advisory group that he's a part of. So we are actually actively engaged in a lot of those. We'd like to continue that work. And then there's the Council of Governments that's been a point of discussion. So that would also be a regional approach where we could try and find regional solutions. At a state level, we have already engaged with Gordon Thomas Honeywell for lobbying services and really leaning on that to try and get some state assistance with finding a solution. That could also be utilized as part of a approach to discuss with Department of Ecology, our options as well. And then federal, looking to reengage a federal lobbyist in the future so that we can try and get some federal dollars to assist with a long-term solution as well.
Yeah, and on the federal, we have an RFP out right now for a federal lobbyist. It closes on the 28th. And then on regional, oh, so just an FYI, this still being in my calendar. Uh, next week, I believe. I have, there's the Columbia River Policy Advisory Group that we mentioned. They happen to be meeting here in Moses Lake on the 23rd of October. And I've made contact with Larry Mattson, who's the Regional Director for the Columbia River. And he, he and I are gonna go to lunch right after that policy advisory group. So I'm gonna get to know him when he comes to Moses Lake.
Great. I'm gonna go ahead and take a pause. I think there are some students here. Are you students? Okay, if you guys want to come up and get your sheet signed, you can go home. Yeah, so just come on up and we'll sign it.
Did they pass their exam?
They're still awake, so I think so. Were you bored?
I appreciate that. Thanks for coming.
Students, anybody looking at a future in water?
Okay. Let's get back to it.
All right, so we can advance to the next one, Tamara.
One thing I will, you know, as we regionalize this thing, I would really be in favor of pushing to get but just a water lobbyist for the regional initiatives.
What didn't Brianna said she was gonna?
Well, I know, but we have other legislative priorities we have to take care of. And if we're doing something at a regional level, I would think that's appropriate to have.
Yeah, I agree. So we're on the hunt for that person or firm right now. Yeah.
Yep, okay.
I, I would think a political solution is faster than a legal one, than going to court, so.
Yeah, that's the idea, sort of a guru of sorts or whatever you want to call it. Yeah.
All right, so second to last slide there, just a little bit, Tamara, thank you. So then we were looking at reporting accountability and we'd shared out that we, once we get solidified our short-term, long-term goals and the initiatives you want us to focus on, then we're looking at quarterly updates on the progress to those goals and the, the actual projects we're working on pertaining to them. And then summary of work with our partner organizations. And then on an annual reporting, we were looking at providing updates on those conservation efforts because we really want to look at a whole year at a time, year over year. And then those big milestone goals, trying to see what kind of progress we've made throughout the year. And it gives us an opportunity with council's direction to shift gears if we need to. If we're finding that some of the things we've chosen to focus on are no longer viable solutions or a door is opened that we didn't expect, then that's an opportunity for us to also have further discussion and look at adjusting as we go. And then our last slide is just if you have questions, comments, it's Brian and I. And you have us both tonight, so.
And Your Honor, we, we plan on bringing back this strategy paper for your adoption in the near future. Is it on the 28th? Oh, let's, we need a little more time. How about, let's go, we need to make some edits and things. Let's give us some time and maybe the first regular meeting in November, if that's all right.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe then, is it possible to formulate some sort of a starting point document that just gives us the data as it is today? What our total production is, consumption is, et cetera, and then what our population projections are, et cetera.
Yes, yep. And we're working on that map that you want to.
Yeah, that'll be the sort of the starting place here, right?
Yeah.
An honest accounting is what I would call it.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Councilmember Lombardi, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank both you and Brian. This is phenomenal what, what you people put together here. This is the equivalent of a, of a white paper and, but in, with a lot less papers, pages, I should say. So no, this was really fantastic. Way to go, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. All right, do you have enough feedback from us for now?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Okay.
I've got lots of notes. We're good. I've got lots of notes. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you all for your participation. We're gonna take care of a few staff reports before we get out of here, starting with a transportation sales tax renewal update. Madeline, I'm assuming has something to say about this or just?
I'll I'll take that one. So um, a few weeks ago at a council meeting, I told you that that sales tax is expiring at the end of 2026. I was incorrect. It actually expires at the end of 2027. So you don't have to go to the voters next year to renew it. If you want to renew it, you could uh renew it in 2027. Or if you want to be proactive and go out a couple of years, you can still uh bring it to the voters next year. But just remember that one of the things we talked about as part of the capital improvement program um and getting a new fire station and police station, the pot, the potential need to go to the voters for a bond measure for that. So think about the timing and whether you'd want to do two things in one year or do one thing one year, the next, another thing the next year. So. Um, so my recommendation was to go to the voters to extend the um TBD sales tax and go to the voters in February of 2026, but I don't think you need to now. And so just wanted to get your sense of what you want to do. If you you want to punt that into 2027, you certainly can. Uh, odd years are also council member election years, and so there's that dynamic as well.
Yeah, I mean, point or odd years are also odd years in elections. It's not if you have something like this and other entities are also asking for money in some other way, people might be more turned off. So I I like 2027 a lot better.
Okay. One other thing is, I'm sure you all know, you have a 10 a.m. council meeting tomorrow. It's a joint meeting with the County Commissioners in Efreita at 10 a.m. Uh, the the agenda has been published. I have hard copies of that agenda if you want to see the hard copy.
Did everybody get that in their email? I mean, I know they did.
Yeah. We have a lot to talk about in two hours, so we'll need to be efficient.
Yeah.
But I really do want it to be a board-to-board conversation and not dominated by staff. So I I I talked to the the newly appointed interim county administrator, Tom.
Gaines.
Gaines, thank you. Um, he and I are the same Pete.
We have a Tom Lost and they have Tom Gaines.
Do we really? Their gain is our loss. But anyway, um, so we're on the same sheet of music as far as staff not playing a huge role. And in a couple of topics, staff might need to kind of introduce the topic, but we're gonna make sure that you guys are meeting board-to-board and having that conversation rather than it being just a superficial updates type of a meeting. So. And I'm gonna reserve the the Camry. And so if anybody wants to um carpool with me, let me know. I'm, I'll be leaving about a little after nine.
Me and Judy are carpooling together.
Okay, and that's all I have.
Uh, anything else? Nothing happened this morning?
City manager. We have.
What can I forget? Yes. Yeah, I asked Liz to hang her, hang around for that. Yeah, sorry.
Take it away, Liz.
All right. So um, if you have not heard, we have successfully sold all 39 units that were once used for the Open Door Sleep Center. Want to just provide you an update with that. I'm sure you've probably heard some feedback. Um, so as of 7:30 this morning, the floodgates opened and we had an astounding turnout of citizens who were interested in purchasing those units. We estimated at least over 130 individuals who showed up. Um, staff did their best to prepare for helping streamline the process and answer questions along the way in anticipation to the sale. We posted as much information as possible via our website, our social medias, and then had some additional articles by both Source One News and Columbia Basin Herald. So lots of information circulating, lots of returned phone calls, lots of answered questions. Nonetheless, we did have some hiccups along the way, but no one got hurt. Everyone got out safely. And so I just wanted to provide you guys an update with that. In total, we uh were able to produce $12,700 out of that sale. Um, those dollars will go back into the homeless program as originally purchased those units were grant dollars, emergency housing grant dollars to be specific during COVID-19 times. And so with those restrictions come that they need to be allotted back into that revenue source. Um, so yeah, if you have any questions, please let me know, but just wanted to provide you an update to that.
Thank you, Liz.
And while we're talking about shelters, um, Liz might have a potential buyer for the pallet shelters as well. So.
Oh, I was gonna say, if that fell through and there was as much interest in the other ones.
Well.
I think pricing had a lot to do with that too, though.
Right. But um, this, if we can just sell it to one buyer, that that'll be a lot easier. So.
Great.
Stay tuned. We'll have more in the future.
Okay. All right. Uh, city council member reports. I'll start with Councilmember Lombardi this evening.
Well, got a lot to say. Hopefully it doesn't take up too much time. Um, at the Port of Moses Lake, they had a number of updates. Uh, one of them was uh the Millionaire uh Air Show and uh they gave it a review uh just like they did during the LTAC presentation. Uh, huge success this year. Uh, for next year, they already have 43 local sponsors um signed up. So they're expecting this to be a growing uh event. Um, they're looking to also do uh possibly on a Friday, one free day for everybody to come in, uh, because they want to get more people, more of the citizens involved in it. They also are going to change their schedule uh so that way they're not in conflict with the gorge events. And so uh that way that'll also support the hotels when on some of the downtime. Um, so that made a lot of sense. Uh, also a lot more military uh planes. Um, and then the other update, which was in the paper today as well, um, the rail project is they've acquired all the land now that they need. So that uh bids are going out for a consultant and then bids on the actual work will start in January. So that's a big deal for Moses Lake. That's going to be um, their goal in their uh, the port's uh 10-year plan is to make uh railroad um transportation to be number two in the state. So that's, and I, and from what I've seen, I don't think it's that out of reach. Um, the, we got an update on the next stage of growth. Um, and they're saying they're going to need a lot of workers um coming into the future as far for the companies that are moving in. And they're gonna have to look into not only Grant County, but also Adams County. So this is a, again, this growth is a big deal. Um, and the other thing they're working on with um, looking at and working with the state is the carbon capture technologies that are out there because that will be one of the requirements and they're evaluating both dry and wet uh technology. So it's pretty interesting. The one that kind of really made my eyes open up is uh nuclear-based companies are very, very interested now in the port. So everybody, once they heard that power is is going to be available in the future, um, there's a lot of interest. So Moses Lake's got a real bright future. Um, in the municipal airport, they did their cleanup and um uh apparently the majority of the work was done by Commissioner Jeremy Davis. So thank you for your service in keeping costs down. Um, I know Representative Tom Dent uh made a note of it, thanking you. And uh, again, you you've done so much for this community from taking students up during the Japanese exchange and now working with uh Amador Castro. So again, thank you for your service to this community. Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Councilmember Myers?
I have nothing to add. I just wanted a clarification on our um Moses Lake ad hoc homeless. Are we meeting on the 16th? Cause it's not on my calendar.
Uh, no, we have adjourned those meetings. The final process was our follow-up interviews. Um, and council will be hearing from staff on recommendations and the next council meeting or the following after.
We're just gonna make sure we get that removed from the list.
Yeah, you got it. Yeah, we'll make sure to get that taken care of. Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you, Don. Councilmember Scog? Councilmember Martinez?
Um, Board of Health is meeting tomorrow, wasn't uh last week. And then um, the NCW opioid. We are adding, after speaking with uh our city manager, Karen Lindsay, uh, we're adding Liz into the group. It did not need board approval or council approval from O A C. So uh, the plan is uh to update Liz with uh during a Zoom meeting with Carolyn. Uh, Dustin, if you want to also attend, I can so that you're up to date as well.
Thank you, Deanna. Councilmember Fancher?
When, when, oh, no.
I get it.
I was enjoying myself last week, you guys. That's why I said that. Uh, EDC meeting in the mornings. I'll start my mornings at 7 a.m. tomorrow and then roll over to the county and see you guys all later. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mark. Deputy Mayor Madewell?
Uh, I attended the SWAC meeting in Efreita and um, so, excuse me. They started a um crew, um road crew to pick up garbage. And so they had, they decided to hire a full-time crew. And so they went 174 miles. They picked up 20,000 pounds of litter, 18,000 pounds of illegal dump.
Good lord.
And so they felt that it was successful so far. And um, yeah, that was pretty crazy. And then um, on the phase four construction, it's two-thirds finished in October the 31st. And the drainage material is being placed in existing landfill. They figure it will be full by 2035.
And what's the new, how how far along is the new one you're saying?
Uh, they said it's two-thirds finished by the end of October.
Cool.
They're putting the drainage material in now.
All right. Thank you, Judy. Um, I don't think I have anything to add, so. I guess we'll go ahead and adjourn at 9:20. So you hear on October the 15th tomorrow. What's the 22nd? Special meeting?
Special meeting.
Yeah, and then the 22nd is a special meeting also?
Yes.